Can't get this to go off.
All right, so for today, we have all board members here with the exception of Ms. Cancro, who will be here shortly. And with that, I will, we have no executive sessions to announce for this meeting, and we will turn it over to Dr. Zerby for recognition of scheduled speakers. But I will like to remind the public that this meeting is hereby, this meeting is being recorded for audio and video for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. This evening, we have a number of presentations. The first, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Haas, who's the Director of North Monco Technical Career Center. And here this evening, she's brought some of Methacton students and some information to share with you as a school board, as well as a school community. Dr. Haas?
Good evening. Does this work? Good evening. Hi, everyone. I'm Beth Anne Haas. I'm the Administrative Director at North Monco. I feel like I'm a little too close to this, or not close enough. In front of you, I did bring a little bit of information. You have our course catalog that outlines our programs at North Monco. And I provided you with some data for the Methacton students that attend North Monco, a little bit from last year, and a little bit from this year. Mostly last year is a complete set of data. We're still in this year, so there are some data points that are still missing from this year. But you can see your students do quite well. And we're really excited for the opportunity to provide technical career training for the students of the Methacton School District. I brought two lovely young ladies today that you would probably more rather hear from than me. So I'm going to allow them to tell you who they are. I'm only going to give you their first name. And they're going to tell you a little bit about themselves, you know, what grade they're in, what program they're in, and what are their career goals. Please don't hesitate to ask these two young ladies some questions. It's good for them. All right? So we're going to start with Madeline.
Hi, my name is Madeline. I'm in ninth grade. And in North Monco, I'm in the Health Science Program. My career goal is to be a practitioner for premature babies. And what's called, I really want to learn a lot more in North Monco, so I can like help others in my community and my family. That's pretty much it.
All right. And again, Pepperham with questions, please. This is Misty.
How close did I get to this thing? Oh, sorry. Good evening. I'm Misty Emerson. I attend North Monco's Protective Services Program. I'm a senior here. And my career goal is to be a firefighter medic. With the help of North Monco last year, I got my Fire One and my EMT in my junior year. And I'm also a three-time student in our PiUp program. And what PiUp is, it's our full-time program, allowing students to work instead of come to school. I know that sounds bad, but like, we get the option to work. And I have an unpaid internship with Upper Marion Fire and EMS. And I've worked there for the past three years. My sophomore year, I was allowed to work there on Fridays instead of go to North Monco, my regular classes. And then my junior year, I worked Monday, Tuesday, and then now my senior year, I work Wednesday through Friday. So it's a great opportunity. Any questions?
Thank you both for introducing that. I wonder, are there any questions from members of the board for our two students? Yes.
This question is for both of you, but what inspired you to pick your fields?
Do you want me to start? So I'll start. My first year at North Monco was in the Health Sciences Program. I wanted to be a pediatric nurse practitioner. And then we did a chapter on EMS, and then I shadowed our Protective Services Program. And then I realized that I would prefer to be out in the field. And I just made the switch. So that's how I got started. I also come from a family of first responders.
The only reason why I started to go to North Monco for Health Science, it's because kind of multiple reasons. My youngest brother, he was born at seven months, so he was really small. And my dad had recently gotten a chronic disease. And there's a medication that has to do with a lot of medical stuff. So I really want what's good to help him and not having to be in the hospital in and out. So he can be at home and I can help him.
Any other questions? Ms. Austin?
Thank you so much for coming. I am on the Joint Operating Committee, and I really enjoy it. And I am so glad to see that you are enjoying your time and getting so much out of your time at Monco. And for Misty, what are your plans after graduation?
So I got accepted to Liberty University. I'll be studying Fire Administration, EMS, and minor in psychology. And then I plan to go, hopefully get into Fairfax County Fire Rescue and go through their six-month-long academy.
And you have a few more years for graduation. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. How about some other questions? Oh, Katie?
Yeah, first, I just wanted to thank you both very much for being here and for talking to us today. I know that we're, it's not the most comfortable place to talk and present. So I'm really, thank you so much. I wanted to ask, what, for both of you, and I know you have different experiences, different levels of years, what's your favorite part about your, the programs that you've been in so far? So either of you.
So specifically, I guess I'll talk about Protective Services first. I like the hands-on training we're allowed to get there. They give us scenarios, so they really put your mind to the test. And I also, you build a lot of friendship because we're really team-oriented. So a lot of my best friends are in that class with me. So I like that. And then PiUp, I just like being able to get experience.
What I like to do, like in my Health Science class, is that there's also a lot of hands-on things. I really like the, that you have to use a textbook and a workbook to study everything. And honestly, it's just really fun because I get to interact with everybody in my class and not just sit there and just look at everybody. So I really like the communication in it.
I just want to say thank you to the students for attending tonight to share your experiences at North Monco. I think it's a great opportunity that we have the partnership with North Monco, just because it gives our students a more hands-on experience and then also expose you to some of the ideas you're thinking about pursuing in the future. But also, like, as you shared, it gives you an opportunity to maybe something you were considering doing, but now exposed to, it maybe expose you to different aspect of it. So I definitely like that aspect of North Monco and what it offers our students here in Methacton. But I do appreciate the opportunity for you guys to come and just share with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all that you do. And we look forward to great things ahead. Congratulations for all that you do, and have a great evening. Thank you for being with us. So Dr. Haas, I think you have some other news to share with the school board. Is that correct?
Yeah, so our students are able to participate in student organizations. One is called Skills USA. It's actually a national organization. And we have 100% participation. We think it's really important that students are in this organization. Because a couple of things. Number one is, it's a leadership opportunity. Not only do students get to know other students or another young professionals from other schools, they actually learn a variety of leadership skills. And they, look, you saw them tonight. They get up here and they speak. And this is a ninth grader. See, I mean, look, they're fabulous already. And this organization helps them become even more confident and really grow in their profession and within the community of folks that are going to also be growing into these professions and occupations. So Skills USA has opportunities for students to also compete. They compete against other students in this district. So we had five medal winners in districts, which is Montgomery, Bucks, Delaware Counties. And those that got first place, and there are two that you'll hear about this evening from Methacton, will go to the state competition in Hershey in April. And if they win first place at states, then they will go to nationals. So it's a real opportunity for students to kind of really show off their skills and win and, and, you know, just be proud. So this evening, we have some certificates for the students that earned a medal at our district competition just a few months ago. I also asked that Misty help us with the names and the handing out. So I'm going to actually start with our two first-place district winners, first-place district winners, both that will go on to states. And Misty, we have?
Avery Smith.
And Avery is in our Culinary Arts Program. And then we, and our second first-place winner is?
Elijah Peroud.
Elijah Perdue. He is. He's in a team competition for Mechatronics. You heard it, Mechatronics. He's in a team competition. Congratulations. We have two second-place winners at districts. The first one is?
Jacinda Mith.
Jacinda is in our Social Media Marketing Program. She's a ninth grader. I don't think she's here this evening. Okay. And we have?
Misty Emerson, myself.
Wait, you have a margarita. You can't go anywhere. I still need you. All right. And for our third-place medal winner at our district competitions, we have?
Mason Ida Marco.
Is Mason here? Mason is in our Order Tech Program. Thank you so much.
We're really proud of all of our students at North Monco, as well as in our district classes. But we're really excited that in this brochure is opportunities galore for students in Methacton and obviously in the five sending school districts that represent that North Monco represents. So thank you, Dr. Haas. Now, this evening, we also have with us Dr. Walsh and members of the curriculum team to present the literacy plan. So with that, you should have a copy of the literacy plan at your table. And I know we're going to be putting that up on the screen. So you want to do that? So if there are folks from the audience that would like to go on with this wonderful weathered evening, you're welcome to leave now if you'd like. We can, we'll just pause for a second if you'd like to do that.
Enjoy your evening, everyone. Congratulations again.
So with that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Walsh, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, to help us lead the delivery of the literacy plan. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Good evening, everyone. I'm here with my curriculum team, Curriculum Department, Mrs. Strauss, Mrs. Ricky, and Dr. Gorla, as well as, we have some representatives that'll go through some of the slides with us tonight. Patty Montgomery from Schools Cubed, as well as Sean Acotti from Keys to Literacy, and we'll be introducing them in just a little bit. Again, we're here to talk to you about the three-year Methacton Literacy Plan, and where we are, where we plan to go, and how we'll get there. So the next slide talks a little bit about that roadmap on where we are. This presentation will talk about where we currently are with our literacy work, where we plan to go over the next three years, and then most importantly is, how do we plan to get there? So let's talk a little bit about the history of, well, where we are. So the Teacher Training for Structured Literacy. As a result of changes to Act 55 and the Chapter 49 regulations, the Pennsylvania Department of Education began to require colleges and universities to include training in mandatory structured literacy in their teacher prep programs that became effective of August 1 of 2024. So that was just about five, six months ago. Most training programs focused on balanced literacy or whole language prior to this mandate. And I'm just a personal thing, I was a whole language student. I went to college in the late 80s, early 90s. Pause for the date there. But I was a whole language person. So structured literacy and the science of reading was relatively new for some of our teachers who went through those programs, even after myself. So as a result, most, if not all of our teacher current training on structured literacy came from professional learning sessions within our own school district, or outside organizations, or training on their own. So this is a pathway to bring common language, common understandings, and understandings as we move forward to what is structured literacy surrounded the science of reading. So I'll pass it over now to Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. So when we stop to realize that the majority of our staff has been trained in the philosophy of teaching reading other than structured literacy, with the district's approved resource being a balanced literacy approach just three years ago, coupled with the state's mandatory shifts in how we plan to provide instruction in literacy, it's important that we recognize the significant differences between these two approaches that teach a child to read. So we have up here structured literacy and our balanced literacy. And so we can explain the differences. Structured literacy believes in a systematic and explicit instruction of all the literacy components: phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. While balanced literacy is founded on the premise that simply exposing children to quality literature helps in the learning process, with less emphasis placed on understanding the foundational literacy components such as phonemic awareness and phonics. Structured literacy teaches students to decode unfamiliar words as their first strategy, while balanced literacy encourages using context clues, pictures, and guessing strategies before helping a student sound out an unknown word. While structured literacy provides a systematic, cumulative, and explicit instruction focused on developing skills for all students, balanced literacy takes more of an opportunist approach to teach phonics as they appear organically within a text. Although this can feel authentic, it lacks the direct approach that students need to help them understand the building blocks of the English language, making it difficult for them to crack the code and learn to read. In order to practice and apply literacy skills, structured literacy will begin with decodable texts before moving on to more complex texts. A balanced literacy approach focuses more on levels and can rob a student of an opportunity to practice and apply their new reading skills. Finally, a structured literacy approach supports all readers and lays a solid foundation based on the research about how the brain learns to read, while the balanced literacy approach works for some, however, leaving a significant number of students behind and cracking the code on their own. So as the quote from Morton Gillingham states, "Difference is simple." Balanced literacy is based on a philosophy about how children learn to read, while structured literacy is based on the scientific evidence of how children learn to read. And our teachers and administrators will need a comprehensive approach to support their efforts in making the instructional shifts necessary to provide our Methacton students with the structured literacy approach.
As we present tonight, we are going to be using certain terms. And for clarity, we want to review those with you now. When we talk about universal instruction or core instruction, we're referring to that English Language Arts instruction that's all students get every day, whether it's called reading, English, ELA, ILA. That's that every day for every child instruction. For intervention, we're referring to the instruction that's given in addition to that core. So it's core and more when we talk about intervention. That instruction is targeted for students to understand a specific skill or concept. It can be small group within the course. It could be a pull-out session. But students are grouped in a way that they're receiving instruction on the specific area that they need support with. When we talk about assessments, we're referring specifically to the tests that are used to determine skill levels and what form of enrichment or intervention a student may need. We're not necessarily talking about the tests they might take in class each day. We're really talking about those pull-out benchmarks, screeners, and diagnostics. When we speak of a benchmark assessment, those are assessments that compare students against standardized norms and expectations. So it's that individual student compared to a typical expectation for a student at their grade level, at their age. When we talk about the universal screener, that identifies a student, whether or not a student is on target or in need of intervention, and that's a quick assessment, something that we can do very quickly for each student. And lastly, when we talk about diagnostic assessments, that is where we can identify specific skills in which a student is displaying a need or is displaying a strength. In Methacton, our universal core instruction materials for K to six for literacy is our Wonders Program. And in seventh and eighth grade, we're proposing the adoption of My Perspectives, which you see on the agenda this evening. Intervention-wise, for our Tier Two students, that additional instruction with that core resource, all of the resources come with components that enable a teacher to reteach, enable a student to explore a concept or a topic in a new way. And for the Tier Three level, the student who needs more intensive intervention, we have our SIPs Program, which is Systematic Instruction and Phonemic Awareness, Phonics, and Sight Words. And that is applicable K to 12. And we also have our Read 180 Intervention, which focuses some on phonics, but more on that comprehension and vocabulary development. The assessments that we use here for benchmark assessments, in grades three through the high school, we use our Linkit Benchmark, which helps us to see how students would do on their end-of-course assessments, either PSSA or Keystone. Our universal screener, we use DIBbles 8, K to six. And for a diagnostic assessment, K to six, we use the Developmental Spelling Inventory. And K to eight, we use the Eye Ready Reading Diagnostic. Additionally, we'll be speaking about two companies who we've done work with over the last couple of years. Schools Cubed is the first. They're based in Colorado, where structured literacy or science of reading has been the methodology for almost 20 years. We connected with them through the grant that we received through Senator Muth last year. They conducted a literacy audit at all of our K to six buildings in the fall of 2023. Their focus is working with school leadership, whether that be principals, district leadership, or teacher leaders within a building. They help schools develop systems and structures to guide literacy instruction, assessment practice, and data-driven intervention. They coach principals on how to provide instructional feedback to teachers regarding structured literacy. And they guide a lot of this work through their lab schools, which we'll talk about a little later. Additionally, we're looking to work with Keys to Literacy. They're a company based in Massachusetts, and we connect it with them both through Schools Cubed and through the International Dyslexia Association. They recently acquired Schools Cubed and are now one company. Keys to Literacy focuses on work with teachers. They provide professional development on all components of structured literacy. They provide coaching for implementation of learned components. And they provide opportunities for district staff to become certified as coaches or trainers in these various components, so that we can continue the work within district.
There we go. So if we think back to the fall of 2023, there were a number of things that we learned from our work with Schools Cubed. Throughout their walkthroughs in the classrooms, K to six, they discovered some schools were offering enough time for literacy, and some schools had sufficient time for small and whole group instruction. Schools Cubes also noted that the approved resources were tools that could support good literacy instruction. They also found that all the schools knew which students were struggling with reading, and some schools were engaged in progress monitoring regularly. As for interventions, some schools provided ample time for small group intervention to occur, and there was a variety of intervention materials being used. Generally, teachers were using data to make decisions regarding reading needs and interventions. Schools Cubes also found that our school leadership had a good understanding of literacy practices and knew which teachers were in need of support. Generally, teachers were collaborative and came together to examine benchmark data. Based on the Schools Cubed recommendations and knowledge of the curriculum leadership team, several steps were taken in the 24-25 school year already to support strong literacy instruction. In an effort to provide consistency to our core instruction, a common schedule was developed for our K to four schools. Collaborative planning sessions are also happening in the buildings through the leadership of the principals and coaches. A systematic and explicit phonics routine was introduced as a supplemental resource this year. It is called UFLY from the University of Florida Literacy Institute and is being used K to four. Our use of Amplify DIBbles 8 was expanded to use as an universal screener for all students in K to six this year compared to what was done previously, K to two. We have adopted the SIPs intervention tool to address the phonics needs of our most fragile readers, K to 12. And conversations around data focus more on root cause for reading needs, and emphasis is being placed on strengthening core instruction for all students, K to 12. Other recommendations that came out of our work with Schools Cubed in the 23-24 school year were that although our Wonders resource supports the structured literacy approach, most teachers were not using it in such a way. And in fact, many teachers did not appear to be using it at all. A lesson plan template was recommended to assist in creating lessons that align to structured literacy. And that work has been done alongside of our teachers and coaches and is ongoing through our collaborative planning meetings. and is ongoing through our collaborative planning meetings. Moving forward, our balanced literacy approach to a structured literacy approach is dependent on professional development for our teachers and leadership. Teachers and leaders have a clear understanding and vision for what the literacy initiatives look like and how it will affect classroom instruction, and the proper use of materials is the most effective instructional strategies to use. And we cannot do this without the high-quality professional development that's needed. So we're recommending that principals, as well as district leaders, know how to put into place the systems and structures that support teachers and students throughout this initiative. School leaders must know what good literacy instruction looks like in order to provide critical feedback to our teachers.
Based on our literacy audit recommendations and analysis of our own data, we're going to go through in the coming slides our act, our proposed action steps for our literacy plan. The creation of lab schools with Schools Cubed, which will involve coaching principals on implementing the structured literacy practices. The delivery of keys to literacy professional learning, including keys to beginning reading and keys to vocabulary, and the training of coaches and facilitators for keys to literacy. An essential, an essential component of this plan is the designation of two lab schools within our school district, Eagleville Elementary and our Cola Intermediate School. Our lab schools will engage professionals from across the district in learning about systems and practices to support instruction. This evening, Patty Montgomery, one of the founders of Schools Cubed, will share a bit more about the lab school concept.
I'm not a quiet person. Do I, do I have to hold this, or can I put it right? So a lab school, okay, I'm holding it because I can't get it back in there. A lab school is what we do in a district so that the whole entire district can learn about a good structured literacy system without having to pay for a school, for every single school to do this. So the, the district learns. So we come in with a consultant once a month, generally seven times a year, well, it is seven times a year, for two days, a, a back-to-back visit. And we observe, we have a framework that's called our literacy evaluation tool. And it looks at how schools, this is not just about teachers, it's also about the systems that are required to change when you move from balanced literacy to a structured literacy. As an example, in a balanced literacy framework, and you guys did a great job of the differences, in a balanced literacy world, we look at assessments through standards. But in a structured literacy data analysis system, we look at assessments through how are students learning to read. So we would look at the components of phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, and vocabulary. So we analyze the school, which is what we did in the audit, but we continue to use that as a framework. So we look at how they're doing in assessments, how they're doing in database decision-making, how teachers are doing in delivering instruction. In a structured literacy world, we have very systematic instruction, explicit instruction. In a balanced literacy world, we do more of a workshop model. So we work with the principal and the instructional coach to help the teachers understand the difference between the two. So we always continue to look at through the lens of these six domains that we call them. We are not, we never go in to critique a teacher, even though we're in there looking and seeing how they're doing in their instruction. What we're looking for and what we have found after doing this for many years, that schools get further if we look at trends of what needs to be done, not individual, single teachers. As an example, believe it or not, a lesson objective is critically important because it helps the teacher focus on what exactly she should be teaching that day. So we might say, for the next 30 days, we want you to work on lesson objectives with the teachers, or we might want you to work on explicit instruction. So instead of criticizing one teacher that something isn't going right, we're looking at trends so that teachers can collectively work on these instructional strategies together. So we leave a list that's again, based on this framework, and say, okay, here are the very things that we want you to work on, and we make sure that the principal and the instructional coach understand, and we, that's part of the two days, we model for them and all of that sort of thing. And then we come back in 30 days and see how it's going. And so instead of overwhelming teachers and the principal with all of these new things they have to do, we take it slowly so that we don't lose any teachers and principals along the way. So that's what we do for these seven visits. Each year, we like to see them that they lessen, maybe the next year we do five, depending on how the school is doing, and the next year we might do three. So that's, and then district people are there with us when we are at the lab school so that they can take the practices that they are learning as well and transfer those to the other schools within the district. So the whole district gets quicker change by everyone learning together. Does that make sense? So that's what a lab school is.
Thanks, Patty. So really to emphasize, our staff that would be involved in the lab schools would include all of our building principals, our reading specialists, our intervention specialists, and our instructional coaches, so that way we can really be analyzing those systems and structures that can be implemented to all of our K to eight schools for assessment data and intervention practices. Really, it does elevate that discourse surrounding professional learning and surrounding talking about literacy and the level of feedback that all of our staff will get across the So one of the things when we look at this is really truly, overall, that sense of collaboration and the level of personalization of this process available through the lab schools will be key to examining and refining our practices as a district.
For our work with Keys to Literacy, there are various courses that we are able to select from, and what we are looking for is first to work with the course Keys to Beginning Reading. So this would be for our K four teachers. The Keys to Beginning Reading is a professional development course for teaching beginning reading skills to all students in K to three and for struggling students in grades four and five. It provides practical instructional strategies that can easily be transferred into the classroom, and it integrates with any reading program. So it's not necessarily related specifically to Wonders. It's something that's a good practice regardless of what program we're using. We would be engaging 40 staff members at K to four, and they would be all of the classroom teachers at Eagleville, our lab school, as well as a grade level representative from each of the other three K four schools. We would also include all of our principals K to four and our instructional coaches at that level as well. And we expect through this work to see our instructional practice more tightly aligned to structured literacy, seen through our observations and our walkthroughs in classrooms. We also expect to see an increase in our student achievement data and also a reduction for special education referrals.
Additionally, as part of our work with Keys to Literacy, we are looking at working with Keys to Vocabulary. This would be for fifth grade through the high school. Keys to Vocabulary routines emphasize the integration of vocabulary instruction using the existing content area teaching materials. So it emphasizes direct and indirect methods for building vocabulary, and it's truly intended to be used across the school day in content classes. So for this area, again, we'll, we'll receive 20, we'll receive training for 40 staff members on in-service days, and really, it's again, practical instructional strategies to integrate into their existing courses. We are looking at focusing on teachers of ELA, reading, English, and social studies in grades five through the high school, and again, involving our instructional coaches and our administrators at Skyview, Arcola, and the high school. Similar to our Keys to Beginning Reading, we would anticipate that our instructional practices be tightly aligned to structured literacy as seen through our observations by our administrators, increases in our student achievement data, and reduction in referrals for special education.
So outcomes we expect right from the get-go. We will be creating the two lab schools, one at Eagleville Elementary and one at Arcola. We will be getting leadership training in the systems of instruction, assessment, and intervention for our principals, reading specialists, intervention specialists, and instructional coaches. These being seven two-day visits at each of the two lab schools. We'll receive training for 80 staff on the selected structured literacy practice courses, beginning reading and Keys to Vocabulary. We'll receive the materials to support that implementation. Job embedded coaching for teachers in grades five through eight to support the implementation of their new learning, four rounds of coaching for two days each throughout the year. And we'll also be able to have four staff members certified as a coach and two as a trainer in that Keys to Vocabulary course.
So to wrap all this up, we're looking at a financial commitment over the next three years, but starting for this year, we already have worked out through the grant and through our own internal practices of a literacy review, literacy audit, if you will, at Arcola. And then starting in the 25-26 school year, again, as was mentioned, we would have the two lab schools at Eagleville and Arcola, beginning the training for early reading for our K to four teachers and Keys to Vocabulary for our fifth grade through his high school teachers. We would implement our coaching and facilitator training at the same time, and all that would be inclusive of materials and resources. 26-27 would follow the same thing, our two lab schools, Keys to Literacy K to four. We would focus on a topic to be determined based on the needs of the previous year and the 25-26 school year. Same thing with the literacy, grade five to high school, the topic to be determined. It would continue to have implementation coaching and facilitator training. And in year three, our lab schools will again, continue to focus on Eagleville and Arcola, Keys to Literacy K four, and Literacy five to eight high school, topics to be determined with that ongoing implementation coaching and facilitator training. So it is a three-plus year, if you will, concluding this year. We're committed to it. We're ready to roll up our sleeves and get some work done, and at this time, we'll pause for any questions that you might have for the group. Thank you for your time and commitment to this.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh and the curriculum team. Before we take questions from the board, I just want to make sure that you understand that our, our presentation this evening is designed to make a recommendation on a, on a, on what I would term to be three one-year agreements, meaning that we would have, we would lock in the pricing as listed here on this last slide for the three years, and we would have the board approve three separate agreements, one in each of the subsequent years. So with that, the commitment of $142,200 is currently factored into the proposed budget, and with that, it would be our intent of giving your permission to make a recommendation for approval at next week's meeting. Ms. Clary?
Yeah, hi. Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Thank you, everybody. This was for me. This was super informative, and I, I really appreciate it. So I have a few questions, and they're really just to help me understand a little bit better some of the things that we're talking about. I wanted to focus for a moment on the lab schools. So I understand that the lab school and this, the focus is on the principals, the reading specialists, the intervention specialists, and the coaches. What I had questioned when I looked at the presentation was, why is it at Eagleville and Arcola? What about the other schools?
So, and we did that based on, one, Eagleville is what we consider our Title I school. And so that school has, traditionally has maybe underperformed some of the comparative schools in our district. So also, Arcola is also another Title I school. So we use that as one of our benchmarks to, to work with the staff at that particular school to raise student achievement in the area of literacy, English and Language Arts.
Okay, so the three-year plan, if I think if I remember the slide correctly, is focused on Eagleville and Arcola. So then in your mind, when the three years is up, are you creating lab schools at other schools? How does, how do you, how does this work?
It's a good question. It's really going to be based on need. You know, we're going to be constantly examining this plan throughout, but our focus is on just those two schools for now. We, I don't really know what will look like in three years. Our goal is to took those practices, turn around, and support the other elementary schools ongoing.
But I assume that all of the principals from all of the schools, all of the reading specialists will all be there, right?
Correct.
Okay. So maybe the idea is then that they're taking that back to their schools.
That's exactly right.
So then, right, which led me to, okay, the slide that talks about Keys to Beginning Reading, all classroom teachers at Eagleville. This is why I went down this path. So I take it that the, the, the staff and the coaches and the intervention specialists that we're training through the lab school will be taking this information back to the T, so let me strike that. So Keys to, Keys to be, sorry. Very literally.
That's okay. Take your time.
Start over. Keys to, yeah, Keys to Beginning Reading. So who, it says, all classroom teachers at Eagleville. So are they getting something different than what's going to be available to our classroom teachers at our other schools? That's really my question.
I'm gonna, I know, I'll have Mrs. Ricky, because she can probably articulate it a lot better from that lens as far as working through Keys to Literacy.
Okay. Thank you. So it is the same program that they would be getting. It's just a matter of all of the staff at Eagleville as the lab school would be participating in the initial year, and then a representative from each grade level from each of the other schools would be participating in the formal training to be able to take that information back to their school. Keys to Beginning Reading is actually a six-part, a six-day series. So we are looking to ensure that we're able to deliver this professional learning on in-service days, so we'd be looking at two days each year for the three years. However, we've also left that option open. If we're feeling like we want to add some more days, or we want to make sure the training gets done sooner so that maybe in a subsequent year, we could bring in other teachers who weren't necessarily part of the initial training, that would be an option to us. But those representatives will be able to, for each of their grade levels, kind of be a literacy leader at their grade level in their building and return that information to those other three schools.
So you just hit on, I think, my next question, which was in-service days. So it's two days per year that they will?
For Keys to Beginning Reading, yes, it's two days per year that we're looking at right now. If we, again, decide that we think it's important that more happen earlier on, we can talk about that. And then the Keys to Vocabulary is a two-day training. So those folks who will be participating in that would be getting the full training. And again, we're covering our ELA teachers, our social studies teachers, and representatives from the high school who particularly work with our ninth and 10th graders. So we're, we're pretty much getting all of them at one shot with that training.
So I apologize for monopolizing the time. I'm almost done. How do the teachers at the other schools get this information to help change, change or alter whatever it looks like their practice is?
Yes. So beginning with the in-service that they participate in, and that collaboration that we talked about as part of this practice. So when the principals are coming to that one lab school, and they're learning about those systems and structures and putting those collaborative opportunities in place for teachers, that would be part of what we're looking at, ensuring that there's time for that teacher leader who participated in the training to be sharing with their colleagues, to be able to look through the materials, to be able to utilize that in those common planning sessions. So we're able to kind of spread that right from the beginning. But again, if we're discovering that being live and in-person in the training themselves is better, we have that opportunity to look at that in subsequent years.
So I think I heard common planning sessions is where a lot, I get, please correct me if I'm misstating, but it sounds like common planning sessions are where a lot of this information will be able to be distilled or?
That is definitely where a lot of the application of the learning will happen. So that's where we want teachers, you know, boots on the ground, looking at their materials, looking at their lesson planning, looking at those learning objectives, and applying what we've learned. In addition, there'll be professional development for the teachers who aren't in the Keys to Beginning Reading, so we'll also be doing some of the learning in those places. But it's, it's really that when it comes time to put it on paper, that we'll, we'll be hoping to see that implementation across the board, not just with those folks that are in the training.
Okay. And then my last question is about results or measurement. How do you, so this is a three-year financial commitment. I know it will, the learning will go beyond that, but how do you folks view success from this, instituting this?
So some key things. The first is that instructional practice. So as principals and district administrators are doing walkthroughs and observations, we'll also be participating in the training, so ensuring that we're seeing what's being learned being in the training. So ensuring that we're seeing what's being learned, being applied in the classroom. We have the benefit also of the coaching from keys to literacy to help us with that implementation, so that we can continue to refine our understandings and our feedback to teachers as well. So those practices, then, we expect to see that higher student achievement when we do our, our benchmark assessments throughout the year, in addition to our, our PSSAs and our keystones. But also, we expect to see a lot less referral for special education, and even a reduction in the number of students we're identifying as needing intervention.
Okay, so it sounds like you have a way to measure it, like from a data perspective that we'll be able to see. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Any other questions? Mr. Mersky?
So just to elaborate, or maybe expand upon what Kathy was talking about. So how long do we expect it'll take to fully implement this across the entire school district?
Our goal is for three years, and we try to tether it to our comprehensive plan of 95%. That we expect 95% results through our ELA results at the end of the three years. So this kind of goes hand in hand with our comprehensive.
So you expect to be able to train the teachers that, through the coaches, the train, the trainer, the rest of the schools in that three-year period?
That is correct. And we've already started that work. We've been for about the last year and a half. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Am I right? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, thank you. A question on interventions, maybe it's not necessarily in here, but the, is there discussion with our consultants on when and how those interventions and best practices of how to implement those? Is that part of the, the training that goes along for this, for the teachers?
That is correct. And from one of the findings we had the fall of 2023 was, we had a lot of interventions. And the recommendation was focus, get one good intervention, SIPs, as you saw earlier, focus on that as your sole intervention for students. So we're implementing that this year with fidelity. We're collecting data. We're tracking student progress, making changes as needed. So that was actually based out of the recommendations from Schools Cube.
Okay. How does Wilson fit in? I don't see them listed here as a, as a, a source for intervention as a recommendation. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's a specific program. That's kind of outside the realm of this literacy audit.
Okay. Lenny, really quick. So the instructional coaches will be part of the 40, the waves, okay? And then just generically, with these two fine consultants of, we spent two hours at the education meeting. My only concern is, do you have a bench? You know, a three-year, a three-year contract with highly specialized expertise in different areas. I don't know enough about you, your, your breadth of experts that can come in here, but I would hate to, you know, and if they could speak towards how we can make sure we have the same quality that we've had in the first year, the next three years.
Sure.
I could just share with our initial experience with our literacy audits at the, the five schools. We actually had three different experts, and not even Patty at that time, participate with us. And we were super impressed with not only their understanding, but also their fidelity to using their tool, that literacy evaluation tool. Each of them, very different people, very different personalities, but really stuck to that tool. And you can see that in that summary of, one was at Woodland, one was at Arrowhead, and then we had Alan Dillon, who spoke at an earlier committee meeting at our others. So they definitely have the people to be able to support that. In addition, the staff that they bring on are often either current or retired principals or district administrators. So they do have a lot of folks that are able to consult with them. And again, their training, in order for everyone to really stick to that, that literacy evaluation tool as well as they did, is definitely something that we were impressed with, and we'd be looking forward to.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. This was really helpful to me. I just had a couple of questions on the, the audit findings. So when I look at this November 2023 audit findings page, I see that there's some discussion about time, having enough time for literacy. I don't see anything in here about achievement. Were there findings related to achievement?
So they did look at our data. They did look at our DIBLs data that we're using in the past. They looked at our PSSA data, but that wasn't part of the recommendations because they knew where we are, and this was the recommendations to get us to where you need to be. So, but they did look at our data.
So was a finding that we're not where we should be?
That is correct. We should be achieving at higher levels. And the results kind of support that finding.
Okay. And then there's another statement in here about the recommendations that talks about core instruction, and it says that teachers were not using the core program. So my question is, is this something that has been noted in observations on an annual basis?
We have worked very hard at ensuring that our teachers use the program with fidelity, and working with our district leaders and our building leaders on, we have a core resource. This is the resource that we should be using. And our expectation is through these common plannings this year that we are using that to support ELA throughout all levels, K to six.
So how are we going to make sure that that's happening? Like, what's the check going forward? Because it sounds to me like we had a system in place, and we have observations that happen to verify that things are being used appropriately. And it doesn't seem like that was identified by our own team. We had to have an outsider come in to do that assessment for us. So going forward, will that be something that we are assessing ourselves, or is that something we're going to continue to rely on Schools Cube to come in and assess for us?
Absolutely. That's something that we are doing at our level as district administrators.
So does that put a lot of pressure on our principal and our one teacher who's going to the training to sort of make sure that they're conveying what needs to be done?
It's pretty clear. We're making it very clear through this, through our commitment of this three-year literacy plan. It's, it's been on our radar, and it continues to be one of our highest priorities.
Okay. The other question, I guess, and I think that others have said this, I'm, I'm a little concerned that when we're talking about rolling this out, we're only going to have one teacher. Let's, for example, at Worcester, there's only one teacher per grade level that's being trained in the original cohort. I don't know that one teacher is enough to be able to facilitate the teachers in that elementary school really getting started with the program fast enough. Is there an option for us to add a second teacher or a third teacher to that original group so we can get a little more continuity? If we train a teacher once a year, and that teacher decides to leave, we've lost that training, and there's no one else to back it up?
Sure.
So I just, I'm just asking the question as to whether it's being considered.
We can, we certainly can review all those options, but I think it's important to note too, that the reading specialists at each of the buildings be part of this, the building principal, of course, the instructional coaches. So there's going to be a myriad of people coming out of that lab schools, taking it back and delivering it to their home buildings, not just the one teacher per grade level. So there are going to be several teachers.
With what we've got with?
That's, that's the recommendation that's worked in other districts that have used this lab school. So it's a best practice that we're, we're relying on that. We could certainly adjust as needed, but this is our starting point.
I just want to make sure that the other elementary schools are, the teachers are also getting the support they need, right? Like, I just don't want them to feel like we're being asked to implement something, and we don't really feel we're supported fully. So I just want to make sure that there's additional support there.
Thank you. Yes.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions to my left? Ms. Cancri?
Going off to Kate's thing, I think of, sorry, Arrowhead, right? Because I know that that was definitely an area of need for Arrowhead. So I understand why we're, Eagleville is our lab school, but I know, like, with the scoring, that Arrowhead definitely needs some more support there as well. I do note that principals are going to be a lot more hands-on, I think, in the curriculum literacy. So I am interested to hear feedback and how that's going, because that's going to need a lot of training. It's just a different, you know, style and protocol that they're dealing with. The lesson, the common planning sessions and the lesson plans, I would hope that's where you're going to do a lot of that reminders in, right? So
Correct.
Will you be bringing those lesson plans to those monthly meetings that you have with School Cube, so they could just take a look over at them?
That is certainly something. Yeah, absolutely. It's something that they want to use to plan for that next month's lab school.
Great. And the other thing I would just add is that I, we did increase time when it came to instruction, right? So I think that was one thing we should just add into there. That was definitely a positive move on our end, too. So thank you for this presentation, and welcome to Math Acton for the next three years, hopefully.
Ms. Purdue?
I do want to say thank you for the presentation. I know this is long coming. We've discussed this at committee, and I think I'd like that we are starting. I do have a question, and I don't, if I can ask Ms. Patty Montgomery, just because when we think about the school labs, I have a question, and maybe, I don't know if it's a concern yet, but I'm wondering, based on your experience and the size of our district, are the two school labs sufficient for this work to get started?
Thank you. We've got to start somewhere. So yes, we hope so. I mean, we've done it before with one school. We've done it with four schools. There's a variety of configurations. So I think that we'll learn a lot having one lab school, a tremendous amount.
Two lab schools.
One at the elementary and one at the secondary. Yes.
Okay, so can I just ask, maybe in a year, and I don't know, I think as part of your three-year plan, we'll also do yearly audits. Is that part of it?
We do the tool. We continue to use the same tool that we use for the audit. So yes, and they get that three times a year.
Three times a year.
And we do keep try, I mean, there's, we hate to say it's a score, but it's how they are doing in each of the domains, how it's being implemented. And so we, we gather what we call a running record to see how that goes over time.
Okay. So then, can I ask that maybe in, once we start, in a year, can we get an update on where we are? I will be curious to see, just because when we look at the audit, there's a lot of things that's indicated that look like we could be more consistent within our buildings.
Yes.
And I think I will be interested to see in a year where we are. I will expect we'll see our audit will look different. So I'm hoping we can see that. But I'm also curious if, if within the end of the first year of implementing, if we'll be able to have enough information to determine if just the two school labs are sufficient for the size of our district, right? Because I think if we find, I think based on the results that we are hoping to achieve, and based on the audit and wanting to be consistent, I just worry about starting with the two lab schools. And I have to agree with Ms. Graff, with the inclusion, I think we said we'll have the reading specialists from all the schools also attend the trainings. And but then, with just having one teacher there, I don't, at each grade level, and I know it's challenging to get more involved, but I think I would like to get a baseline. Once we start, if we think there's a need to consider including more, because what we've heard, and I think we discuss also at committee, professional development is very critical to achieve, to ensure that we can achieve our goals with this. And I think it's a big investment. It's definitely the right investment for our students and also for our teachers. So I will like to get, I will like to get an update just to see if we're seeing some changes, and if there's a need to really evaluate the three-year plan.
100%. And I can tell you that I would love to come back in a year and let you know how.
I know you will. We'll definitely see you again at committee, but definitely for the full board. And I think, so that, that was my main focus of the question. And I did have one more. Just give me one second. I took some notes here. Okay, it may come back to me, but I'll look through my notes. I'll pass it on, but.
I'm wondering if I could speak to something one of the two of you ladies asked, and it was about, why aren't they using the resource for reading? And you know, that's actually quite typical across the country. And here's what happens. Teachers get a resource, they get okay training from the publisher who provides the resource, and then they just go, oh, I don't quite understand that, or I'm going to pick out the pieces that I like, or I want to use this instead. But one of the things that we do when we're observing with the principal, is that we say to the principal, okay, let's pull up those lesson plan templates, and let's see if they are teaching what they said that they were going to be teaching. And so the teachers get used, used to the feedback based on the lesson plan template and the things that they should be teaching. What they find is that it's pretty successful to teach that way. So because of the feedback and the observations on using the lesson plan template, they then get in the habit, because they like it better, of being, having a more structure to their, to their literacy block. So that is how we fix that, anyway.
My other question. It was about the lower referrals for special ed. I'm just wondering, how do we, how do we bring in special ed into this scope? Just because I know that's a very hot topic for us, and I'm just wondering if you can just elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure.
So same thing. We, we observe special education classrooms. Often, special education teachers are left out of coaching because the coaches don't have the background for special education. So lucky you, we do. So we come in, teach the principal and the instructional coach what to look for in special education as well. So their instruction becomes better. And so we end up dramatically reducing the number of students needing special education. And it's really quite simple. They haven't had the instruction or the coaching that they so desperately need. So that is how that works.
Okay, thank you. And that's what I was looking for. So thank you very much.
Ms. Steele?
Thank you. Thank you so much for this presentation. Dr. Montgomery, Ms. Patty Montgomery, before you go back up, I, I remember from Ed Committee that you shared some very impressive pieces of information about their school districts you've worked with that have reached the top. And not to put you on the spot, because I know it's not part of it, but I feel like those are numbers that might stick in your head. Can you just share some of the success that some of your other districts you've worked with have experienced?
Well, oh, sorry. I have such a boop. I was a middle school principal, and I can get 700 kids quiet without a microphone. So, yes, we, we do, you know, I, I don't like to brag, but we do see tremendous success. Many of our schools, 100% of the kids are reading at grade level. Norristown, just down the road, I was just there today. I think they started at 15%. I can't remember. We were just there. They're at 40-something, and they expected, this is in kindergarten, they expect 51% of their kids to be proficient at the end of the year. Starting out in the teens, just one year ago, and it's Norristown, and people think Norristown can't get anywhere, but they're just moving like you can't believe. So we do see dramatic results. You know, often 30% of kids proficient to 75% of kids proficient in two to three years. So that is what you can expect. In the first year, what we typically see is more students moving out of that lowest tier of instruction, special education or tier three, because they have the most gaps in their learning. And when we, again, go in and teach the special education teachers and the interventionists how to give high-quality instruction, the kids move very quickly. We have something that's called a data tracker that your school will use, and it literally measures how kids that are reading below grade level are doing every single week in a subskill like phonics or phonemic awareness, letter naming. I mean, today, I was at a kindergarten center, and I talked about letter names and letter sounds all day. And the percentage of kids that have letter names and letter sounds, which is significant to being able to read, I think is up to like 75%. Again, this is in Norristown. So it's because we teach the principals and the instructional coach how to focus on the exact right thing. Again, I will tell you, the principal that we worked with today, and we've worked with for over a year, is a tremendous principal, and always has been. She didn't become a tremendous principal because of us. But what the difference is, she's learned what to focus on specifically so that the students get better in reading. So I think that that's the difference. I don't know if I gave you enough, but we do have good data.
Thank you. You absolutely did. I just wanted to, I just wanted to continue. Thank you for sharing that. And I just have a comment, really, and one single question. First, I tremendous respect for Schools, for Schools Cubed. My background in literacy, my research in literacy, I've listened to podcasts that have connected with the work of Schools Cube before ever hearing about it with our district, and before our audit was even done. Also, keys for literacy is tremendously is tremendously respected in the field of education. I've had the opportunity to be part of their trainings myself, and it is very applicable and wonderful training that teachers will be able to use immediately. So this work is so, I mean, I could go on and on. I did just want to say thank you for such a wonderful presentation. Breaking down the difference between structured literacy and balanced literacy is not easy. It's complex, and it, this is so easy to understand. So thank you, because that had to have taken a tremendous amount of time. And this plan has taken time to put together. Thank you for that. I want to recognize that this powerful moment in our district because it grasps the need to move forward and provide vital instruction and professional development that is so needed and will be so powerful. I'm so excited to see the data going forward. But I also want to recognize the work already done by all of our educators, because what has already been implemented is hours of work, and it's not work that we are seeing by our principals and our teachers and our other educators. This shift in knowledge, balanced literacy, I was trained in balanced literacy. I knew of whole language. I was trained in balanced literacy. The shift to structured literacy and the understanding of the science of reading takes a while to wrap your head around, because many teachers, many educators have to unlearn what they were taught and told works and what they have used. And, but when they see the power of how many students start to grow with it, it is exciting. And I'm so excited to see our data moving forward. So I think I can start, I do have two more things to say, because, that's why I wrote it down. First, I, we have been discussing our budget in the last couple of months, and special education was a topic. Georgetown University's Edunomic, Edunomics Lab, which is a part of their policy department, focuses on education and economics and the policy around it and what can be done, because the rise in special education costs is not just Math Acton School District, it's across Pennsylvania and across multiple states in the United States. The number one thing we can support to help that is a strong literacy program. And I cannot emphasize that enough. And last but not least, my one question is, because there's been a lot of questions, I do wonder, could there be possibly a way to capture teachers who, if they're not part of the initial keys for literacy training, maybe they could say, hey, I'm interested, because that buy-in is huge. So maybe we could capture that in some way, so that if there's interest.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great idea. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Austin?
All right. She's a tough act to follow, but I feel like now it's like, wah-wah. Okay, so I do have some questions. And thank you for the presentation and helping me to understand this better. So my one question I have is, what are the plans to evaluate instruction or to assist with instruction at the high school level for students who may not have benefited from a structured literacy instruction, you know, and who could maybe benefit from that kind of coaching or?
Correct. I'll talk a little about it. I know Dr. Gorle will also have more information. But again, we have a group of students, to Ms. Steele's point, that were trained under balanced literacy that are now at upper levels, eighth grade and above. And so we're putting some stopgap measures in. We're working with our English teachers as well as the department about shifting their focus on how we can use some of those science of reading skills, even for our upper grade students who may not have some of those basic foundational skills. And you'll see the one of them is the keys to vocabulary. That's really going to be the crux of the focus of our work, five to 12, but specifically for the upper grades.
So do we have students identified who are really in, maybe struggling with reading, who could really benefit from the keys to literacy? Not, I'm not talking about the vocabulary piece, but the actual building blocks, the phonics, that kind of instruction. Can we identify them, or do, have we identified them, and what can we do?
Yes, to the first two, yes, we can. And we do have an idea who they are. And that's what we're working on with this plan, is working through our consultants to figure out how we can kind of address some of those needs earlier, rather than pushing it off and waiting.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to talk, Dr. Gorle, about your plans?
So we have been working to identify students who would benefit from the SIPs intervention. We are also having ongoing discussions about the interventions that we can provide at the high school level, because we recognize that it's very different to provide an intervention as students get older and are at that nine to 12 level. As Dr. Walsh said, part of the keys to vocabulary is the idea that it's across the content areas. The other thing that we've been talking a great deal about is reading and writing across the content areas, and how it's so important to have that infused into every class, so that that way, when you're looking at what we would consider tier-one instruction that everyone's getting, that there are certain levels of support built into each of those classes to be able to help all students. And then, of course, to be able to work to identify who are students, who those gaps are larger, so that we can then help them as they progress through high school.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I just want to make sure that everyone's getting the best quality instruction if the balanced literacy wasn't serving them well. And my second question, so the keys to beginning reading or the vocabulary, so what kind of a resource is that? Is that like a tangible resource? Is that a software program or text-based? And then is that something that all teachers can have access to if they are wanting to develop their instructional skills in those areas or be able to refer to?
Yeah, it is a resource that we have, and we'll be purchasing those materials. Oh, hello, there they are. And we actually have some of those available that we've been looking at as a team as well. So that is the foundation, if you will, the keys to vocabulary and the keys to early reading, the keys to writing.
Okay. And just curious about the Norristown success. Did they also use this lab school model?
Yeah, Norristown did use the lab Schools Cubed.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then I guess, you know, I'm hearing my colleagues, and I just want to echo the concerns to make, just to make sure. I would like to actually see a presentation about this sooner than a year. And I just want to make sure that when we are training the trainer in this way, that when we're sending teachers with a different way of instructing back to their home schools who are not part of the lab school, that they really do understand how to deliver that instruction and how to teach their peers this instruction. And I'm just wondering, you know, I'm, feel very strongly that we are all on the same page, this board is all on the same page about that. And I don't know if that is, if that's something measurable that we can do. But it's just really important that we have that consistency across all the schools. I understand why we're choosing these schools as the lab schools, but to me, the consistency of this is the best practice. We want to make sure that all of our Math Acton students are getting the exceptional instruction.
Correct. Yeah, that turnaround training is essential. And, you know, making sure it's done with fidelity. So we're just as excited as all of you are. And we're committed to this. We wouldn't be up here if we weren't committed. And it takes a group effort, and we stand behind it. And our belief is, every teacher should be a reading teacher, no matter what subject you teach. The reading is the foundation of everything. So that's where this commitment comes in.
Okay. And lastly, I just want to thank in advance all the Math Acton educators, the teachers and staff for, ahead of this endeavor.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Any other questions from members of the board for the curriculum team? Seeing none. Dr. Walsh, team. Patty, thank you so much for your time this evening. Well done. We appreciate all your effort, and we look forward to putting an item on the board for your consideration next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Suri. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the high school update and five-year projection. So Ms. Steffi and I are going to tag-team on this. If we could put the five-year projection up on the screen. Okay. We'll leave it at the title slide for just a minute. It's important that I share the following information. Over the past several years, my administration and I, along with you and countless other members of the Math Acton School District community, have focused on the future of Math Acton School District, keeping the, the following at the forefront. Our commitment to ensuring and continuing focus on student performance, program development, academic excellence, a focus on our commitment to recruiting, retaining, and developing employees, and our commitment to addressing facility needs as outlined in our master facilities plan. Collectively, our continued commitment to these three pillars of focus are destined to produce the very best possible future for our school community. As part of a process to envision our future forward with potentially a new high school construction, we updated, we recently updated the assumptions used in our five-year budget projections. And with that, I ask Ms. Steffi to take us through several of the slides here this evening. Ms. Steffi?
Sure. I am going to share an updated five-year projection detailing the five-year impact of a $213 million borrowing. As we look at the revenue projections for the next five years, our assumptions are based on the 25-26 budget as the baseline. One of the key considerations is that Act One projections will guide revenue growth. But assessment growth remains relatively flat, limiting new sources of local revenue. Additionally, state subsidies for both regular and special education are expected to be lower than previously projected, creating further restraints on our budget. Another important factor is the decline in interest rate environment, as projected by PFM, which will impact earnings on investments. Furthermore, federal funding is assumed to remain flat, meaning we cannot anticipate additional relief or growth in this area. Earned income tax revenues are expected to follow current trends, providing some stability but no significant expansion. Together, these assumptions shape a conservative revenue outlook, emphasizing the need for careful financial planning and expenditure management in the years ahead. On the expenditure side, our projections are also anchored in the 25-26 budget as the baseline. Salaries and benefits, which constitute a major portion of our budget, are expected to increase in alignment with contractual agreements and market trends. Transportation costs will continue to reflect contractual obligations, while special education costs are anticipated to rise at a much higher rate than previously projected, placing additional pressure on expenditures. Departmental and building budgets are assumed to follow historical spending patterns. Additionally, transfers to the capital projects fund and debt service obligations have been updated to reflect actual needs, ensuring that facility investments align with available financial resources. These expenditure trends combined with the revenue assumptions underscore the need for strategic financial planning to maintain long-term fiscal sustainability. This slide presents the financial outlook over the next five years, illustrating projected revenue and expenditures with a borrowing scenario of $213 million. The figures reflect updated assumptions based on current economic conditions, funding treads, and contractual obligations. As we analyze the financial projections, we see that a deficit begins to emerge in the 27-28 fiscal year. This shift is primarily driven by expenditure growth outpacing revenue increases. While revenue growth rises slowly due to minimal assessment growth, declining state and federal subsidies, expenditures continue to rise at a much higher rate. Key cost drivers include increasing salaries and benefits in line with contracts and market trends, higher-than-anticipated special education costs, and necessary transfers to the capital projects fund and debt service obligations. These growing expenses create an imbalance, leading to a deficit that requires proactive financial planning to mitigate long-term fiscal challenges. Understanding this trajectory is crucial as we consider future borrowing, capital investments, and operational strategies to maintain financial stability while upholding our core commitments to students, staff, and facilities.
So recognizing that we've begun the exploration of a new high school on the assumption that spending about $170 million, and to see the cost grow to about $213 million was challenging, to say the least. But the projected $213 million will require us to borrow more money than previously projected. It encroaches upon our borrowing capacity level or legal borrowing limit, and the borrowing is estimated to cost us more than the current, in the current market environment. When factoring in these new cost assumptions, along with our current budget status, inclusive of declining revenue, as Ms. Steffi indicated, also with the labor market forecast and the overall uncertainty in the economy, has been determined that the risk of moving forward with the current new high school campus construction plan could place our pillars of focus at risk. I reported last week to the Finance Committee of the Board, and they concur that the updated five-year projections, inclusive of these new assumptions, showing that borrowing $213 million places significant strain on the future budget years, specifically in years four and five and beyond, approaching deficits beyond our capacity to address. Regardless of how we plan to smooth out the budget or borrowing over time, these current projections show a future risk that necessitates consideration for seeking an alternative to the construction project of this magnitude. But remember, equally important is the fact that issues remain at the camp, on the campus and in the buildings that require us to act. Next slide, please. So therefore, while keeping true to our three pillars of commitment and recognizing the current projections present future risks that necessitate consideration of alternatives to the construction project, I recommend that we do not proceed forward into design development at this time and seek alternatives from our design professionals to address issues that remain on the campus and in the buildings. The path forward will require continued collaboration, strategic decision-making, and a shared commitment to finding a fiscally-appropriate solution that allows us to address as many of the campus and building challenges as possible through the exploration of these alternative options. Here this evening, our members of our design team from CHA, our owner's rep, to provide insight on how we may proceed forward.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening, everybody. So with that information, which we became aware of, we started thinking about the process for reevaluating the high school, the current high school. Obviously, if you remember back from February of last year, we initially presented a series of options ranging from an in-place renovation, obviously all the way out to the new building construction. So at this point, we really just need to hone in on the needs within this building, what the opportunities are with attaining the goals set forth for programmatic needs, for curricular needs. So at this point, CHA and Trader Group are prepared to develop a feasibility study for improvements. We won't say renovations. We won't necessarily say additions. It most likely will include both, but improvements to the existing facility that will address the needs and address the items that have been identified throughout that extensive campus planning committee process. Really, the first thing that we really need to establish with the board, with the school district, is an updated budget. Obviously, that's going to provide the most important parameter for us in terms of the scope of improvements, what's feasible and what's not feasible. I understand that that process has started with PFM. I believe in April, there will be an update for some additional funding and budgetary projections and options. And that, again, really is key for us to understand what the parameters are moving forward. So again, that process is already in the works. So again, just focusing in on some of those key items that we've been talking about, ADA, not only accessibility, but improvements to ADA throughout the building, obviously circulation, we keep talking about the transfer time between classes can certainly be improved. What can we do within the existing building to, to help improve that? HVAC, obviously, that's been on the list. That was one of the really hot items historically. So what are the opportunities for us to improve the HVAC and the conditions within the building? As far as actual spaces, collaborative learning has been a key factor. What can we do, again, to recreate or reshape spaces within the building, or potentially as additions, to enhance any collaborative learning spaces? So the first couple of weeks as part of this process is really going to be focused on programming and curriculum. programming and curriculum. We really want to make sure that the square footage, that the spaces available, really are going to address the programmatic needs, the curricular needs that the high school has. And again, if there are improvements necessary through additions, we're certainly going to look at that. Maybe there are certain wings of the building that really are not just serving the purpose anymore. The classrooms, as we know, in the original section are below the PDE recommended minimum, just things like that, that, you know, maybe we can just create a new space or new spaces to address some of the really critical areas of the building. Obviously, site improvements, we are still going to take a really hard look at site improvements related to safety and security with access for vehicles, for potentially separating buses and student drivers and parents dropping off. We all know the bottlenecks that occur at the key times throughout the day. So even within the existing building footprint, what can we do outside of the building to improve that safety and security and circulation? We will also come back to you with some preliminary phasing plans for both the building renovations and the site. How can we start phasing any additions, construction traffic? Do we need modular classrooms? Where are they going to go? How are they going to be served with utilities? So as part of this feasibility process, we'll also be looking at phasing considerations as well. We do still recommend the public sewer connection process. Obviously, that's the district's ultimate decision, but understanding that having the onsite packaged treatment plant is not ideal, whether it was going to be new construction or potential renovation or improvements of existing. So we can come back next week with some updated cost estimates specifically related to the public sewer connection process. There are, I think, three municipalities that are all involved as part of that process, starting here and then ultimately with the upper Perkeomen facility, I believe. So that process is lengthy, it's going to be complicated with approvals and agreements between municipalities. So just something to keep in mind that we should continue that process if the district would like to eliminate the onsite plant. And then the other facilities that are onsite, both Farina and the transportation building, we'd have to reevaluate what's the future, the fate of those buildings. Is it possible that they could be relocated? At one point with the high school project, we looked at absorbing the district office within that space. Is that still on the table? Should that maybe be looked at for moving offsite? So these are all considerations that we'll be including with this feasibility process for the existing building. So in general, the overall timeline that we're looking at, in March, we would like you guys to approve a proposal, which will be coming forth next week already, and it's going to include the steps that you'll see throughout the next four to five months. Devin and his team at Trader Group will be performing a complete building survey so that they can build their model. You know, you saw all their beautiful renderings for the new building. They'll have some similar data and information provided with imagery for the existing building. So that building survey will be undertaken probably, you know, by the end of this month, if not in early April. Again, April is key for confirming the budget. That's really going to set the stage for the options that we are going to be considering moving forward. We're going to be developing the programming, reevaluating the programming with the administration to make sure that, again, existing spaces can be reconfigured, reused, to accommodate that programming. As I mentioned, the building model will be further defined throughout that timeframe. So we'll start to have some concept design development developments in May that we'll be discussing with the board and with the administration, coming up with initial ideas of, again, do we need additions? Can we accommodate things with renovations? Really kind of setting the stage for the scope of what are the improvements? What are the site improvements? What are the proposed building improvements? Further defining those options through budgeting in about the June timeframe, just to make sure that we're still on target with the district-provided budget. We're also going to be looking at the phasing development at that time. Once we have the overall scope and generally comfortable with the budget, we can begin those phasing developments so that we can come back to you guys in July with the presentation of the concept, obviously an updated budget, the phasing, and kind of wrapping our arms around everything completely within this existing campus. So Devin, I'll see if you have any other updates or anything to add, but that's, again, generally the four- to five-month process that we'd be looking at undertaking at this point.
Thank you, Josh. Are there questions or comments from members of the board to my left? Ms. Alston?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for your thoughtful consideration of all of these factors that we're looking at. And, you know, I guess I just want to make sure, you know, I understand the budget uncertainty, and I understand the uncertainty or feasibility of not doing new construction. I mean, and I know there's just a lot of uncertainties, particularly in light of possible looming tariffs on building construction materials and that kind of thing. But I guess I just want to make sure that when we are looking at a reboot of this plan or a rethinking of this plan, that we do keep in mind the student programming. You know, I know that when we talked about a new build, we talked about a lot of enhancements to the arts program, we talked about Fab Lab, International Baccalaureate, we talked about a lunch and learn, reviewing start times, apartment program, life skills, you know, having our art classrooms have access to natural light, the, you know, music and theater. So I just want to make sure that, I don't think it's a judicious use of taxpayer dollars to put money into a 60-plus-year-old building or campus and gain little or nothing in terms of this educational programming. So I just want to make sure that we're always keeping an eye to what we're actually trying to accomplish here in the district and make sure that, you know, I agree with the plan to connect to public sewer, but I want to make sure that we're getting, you know, some really great programming changes and enhancements for our students here if we're talking about large dollars that we're investing.
Thank you, Ms. Alston. Any other questions or comments to my left? Ms. Perdue?
I do want to say thank you. I have to say, I have to be honest and transparent to say I'm very disappointed where we are, just because we put a lot of time and effort into getting here, but unfortunately, it seems like we're not in the proper position to proceed. And it's fine, because we set this up to be in a position that we will have points in the process where we can say, let's pause, look at where we are, and unfortunately, this is one of those stages we are with this process. I think we talked about a lot of the education value that a new construction will bring in many in our community, we're very excited about it. So with that, I do, I do just wanted to be transparent to say I am, I am disappointed to sit here and looking at this recommendation, and I know we said, keeping true to our three pillars of commitment, but I kind of wonder, because if, one of our pillars is to address facilities, I don't know how we're going to do that here with the high school, right? And you may come back with a plan for us, I just don't see it. I agree that whatever plan we end up coming up with, we should make sure I keep with the focus of the issues that we wanted to address in the first place, but I don't want to see us putting a Band-Aid on this building no longer. I think we've done that for years, and unfortunately, I feel like having this recommendation placed in front of me is also to the point where I am staying here another year where we're putting a Band-Aid on this building. I understand our financial outlook don't look good based on the borrowing, but I think we always had a price that we were well aware of that a project of this size with the high school will entail. So then it comes back to like, right now, we're provided with the five-year outlook. I think some of that was done already, we should have had a good idea of where we will be with the borrowing, and I just really, it's a little bit frustrating with this recommendation right now. I look forward to see what we'll end up receiving, but I also look at the schedule that you have there, and I think March, so I don't know if maybe it's not updated, because they say March to approve design, design team, and I'm just wondering, what are we approving in March with the design team? Because maybe I missed that.
What we wanted to do is just provide, for us at least, Devin, it would be a not-to-exceed time and expense proposal to go through this process. So we've provided some preliminary bullet points of what the scope of work is and what the general timeframe is, so we can get that to you guys for consideration for next week's meeting so that we can begin this process. In terms of CHA and likely Trader, you know, we're under contract already, we can certainly essentially roll the proposal, the fee into the project cost, but just in terms of, again, having you guys, having the transparency and having you guys go through step-by-step process of, okay, here's the plan, here's what the outlay is going to be to get that plan, we just wanted to provide you guys with the proposals to do that.
So then, can I just ask, based on what's on here now, where is that approval for the, whatever we're going to approve for March?
It's not on the agenda as it's presented this evening. I believe it's being worked on by both of the groups, if the board so does want to consider it for next week to continue moving the process forward.
So, I mean, right now, I don't know what process we're moving forward. I don't think there's a process that we're moving forward, because the recommendation is that we're stopping the design phase. So I'm just wondering, what is the, I will ask the question, is there a need to have a vote on next week for a plan that we don't have in front of us now? So I just want to ask that question, and you can respond, but I just would like to know, because I don't feel like I have anything that's preparing me to make a decision on a plan for next week, right? We heard there need to be looked at, we need to have, I believe you mentioned, we need to look at the budget and see what is, we need to pretty much give you a price point, right? So we can assess that. Is that information you're expecting to have next week?
Not necessarily the budget, but what we wanted to do so that we're well-positioned come April is that we can at least get the initial surveys completed, and as the district is further defining the budget, we can at least have started the process, understanding that we're shifting from a new build to looking at the existing facility. There are definitely steps we can take before we get that final budget confirmed in April or May, whatever the timeframe happens to be. We just, we don't want to lose time. You know, time is ultimately going to be money at the back end of the project. So we wanted to try to keep the process moving with giving you guys as many options as possible as quickly as possible. We don't want to rush things, but we also don't want to become stagnant where we're waiting months for additional answers or feedback, and again, that's only going to raise the price tag at the end of the project. So we would just like to keep things moving.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Any other questions to my left? Ms. Steel?
Thank you for this, and thank you for your time tonight. I just have two questions, and I kind of answered one just now. The feasibility study, how long does that take?
So that's the process at the bottom of the screen there, so the presentation of that concept or concepts, along with the budgeting, along with the phasing considerations, that timeframe will take us through July.
So that's the feasibility study?
Correct.
Okay. I misunderstood what that was. And I'm assuming that if we were to vote on, I guess, the possible thing for next week would be to shift focus and then say, yes, you can look at what to work with with the existing building, right? And then you would look at the, and I know, like, we've just, I just, in my head, and just being transparent, since I've been on the board, so many presentations and walkthroughs have been about what's wrong with the building, which is a lot. And there's things that come to mind that I think about, like the pool that leaks and has leaked for a while. And with water comes other things, and some health and some rooms that flood often. And so will you be looking at the health of the building and if it's a healthy building to work with? I don't know what the right words to say here. I teach English. Does that make sense?
Yes. Certainly, we're going to be looking at whatever improvements are necessary, and again, it's all going to come down to the concept, plan, what we can afford to keep, what we can afford maybe to demolish and build new. If existing spaces are not ideal in terms of water infiltration, obviously, there would be measures to address that, whether it's under drains or foundation drainage. We're certainly going to be making sure that whatever the proposed solution is, is going to address any health and safety concerns within the building.
Thank you. And I guess I just want to make a comment, just to be transparent, is I also realize where we are right now and at this time, and I realize that there's so much instability in the market right now, and we're not where, and things, and I understand that, but I do also realize the value that a school system and that good school buildings have, not only as an investment in the school district, but also in our property values for anyone who's an owner in the district. And so this, that is something that I do keep in mind, as well as the speed at which we decide to make decisions and move forward with whatever we ultimately decide to do, because time is money. So we do need to make those decisions so that whatever we decide next. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cleary?
Thanks. So just, Josh, this is not really a question for you, I just kind of want to make a general sort of statement or acknowledgement, sort of along the lines of Ms. Perdue, but I do want to recognize that we've heard differing views from all different sides, right? Folks who support the idea of a new high school and those who, you know, really don't support the idea of a new high school. And I just want to acknowledge both, and, but I want to pay particular attention for a moment to the community members and our parents, who are, and probably a lot of teachers and staff, if not all, who are deeply disappointed in where we find ourselves today. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that. I think everyone sitting up here at the table is disappointed in where we are and saddened by where we are, and I think we have to, you know, find a way to turn the page and try to turn this into the most positive thing that we can for the community and for our students. I completely agree with Ms. Alston about focusing on the educational programming. I mean, for me, that is the most important at this point, knowing that we're going to have a different budget than what we were previously batting around. So with that, I do want to say to Josh and to Devin, thank you so much for all of the work that you did. I know you guys, you did a lot of work, really beautiful work, Devin, and it was, I don't know, it was inspiring and exciting, right? And a lot of, you know, everybody saw that, and it was just exciting. And it's been a pleasure having a fellow Lower Providence resident, you know, with a vested interest in the schools participate in terms of that your kids go to school here. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing what you guys can do next. So with that, few questions. I think that the key is understanding, as Josh said, what the budget is, and Josh mentioned that we are talking to PFM. Could you sort of elaborate on what's happening there and what we can expect and when?
I think that we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. Ms. Steffi, is that correct? Yeah, so with that, the concept is, you know, where in the budget process and in the lending process do we find the ability for the district to afford what within the high school and within the existing master facilities plan? And how do we layer, we're obviously going to have to incur debt of some sort, so how do we layer debt appropriately? layer debt appropriately so that we can best afford it? We certainly, if you look at one of the projections, you can see that in the fifth year of the $213 million, there's a $4 million bump. Well, that's, that, that in any fiscal year is, is, you know, almost impossible to, to manage properly without some, you know, very insightful vision. So that's the kind of conversation that we're going to have and look at, you know, how long and how well we can do that within the current market and the, and the current parameters that Ms. Steffi has put together.
So we should be expecting another sort of five-year, five-year presentation from PFM?
Yeah. We, we would like PFM to come back, to confirm our, the conversations, obviously to update, if, if they make other recommendations, we would update our projections to that, that effect. But to give an outlook to the board about how they can best structure debt going forward.
And that will include a look at the, at the, the projected Act One index for those five years as well, right?
Correct.
Okay. So then one of the questions I have, and I don't know if this is for Ms. Steffi or, or for you. On the very first slide, you talked about the revenue assumptions and one was that federal funding would remain flat. My, my question is just, I mean, this is, I have a concern that we could potentially at some point lose federal funding. Have we thought about when we say it remains flat? Have we looked at it alternatively? If we were to lose funding, how that might impact us? And if not, could we?
Let Ms. Steffi answer
Okay.
part of this and then I'll, I'll follow up with it. Ms. Steffi?
Yeah. So right now, in the budgeting process and the projection process, I'm keeping federal funding remaining flat because I know there are talks of reductions. But in terms of the federal funding that we receive, like the title funds and IDA funds, I've received no confirmation that there's going to be any reductions. But as soon as I receive confirmation, I will make the adjustments.
So is that about around the $1 million that we're talking about in total?
Probably about 1.3.
Okay. So I guess why I ask is I understand why you're doing what you're, why you're doing what you're doing. But I guess, to me, it would make sense to, for us to at least consider it and, and understand what that might look like for us. Because that, that is definitely a concern that, that I have. Thank you.
And just to add, just to add to that, the, the, the federal funding that we receive of Title I, II, III, IV, and IDA, if, if in fact, there is a reduction of, of that funding, we would need to certainly make it, while on a, on a financial basis, it's often considered, you know, you, you bring X number of dollars in, you typically expend the full amount of that for the services that are provided. We would have to then determine, are those services going to continue in the absence of that federal funding? And if so, how would we, you know, make that work?
How would we pay for it? Right?
Yep.
Okay. I think I'm almost done. Just give me a quick second. And Josh, you mentioned, did I hear you right? That at the next meeting, you'll be able to provide us with the over, what you envisioned to be the overall costs for the continuation of the sewer connection process? I'm really looking for what, what we think the overall cost for the whole, the whole thing would be.
Of just the sewer connection?
Of just the sewer connection process.
Yeah, certainly. So part of Devin's team, who you guys have seen at some of the meetings, T and M Associates, they are responsible for the actual technical design of that. As I said, there are a lot of moving parts to this, including your solicitor and agreements and everything. So let us, give us a few days to just kind of wrap our hands around all aspects related to approval process, timeline, any potential legal fees, and we can come back next week with an updated number.
Maybe I didn't, I, I probably didn't ask the question correctly. So that will not include the tear down of whatever has to get torn down, the connection itself?
It can, we just, we just want to put everything
Okay. That's what I'm looking for, just so, okay, just so we're clear. And I did have one more thing. But I'll yield to somebody else while I try to figure out what that, one other thing is.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Winters?
Just add some color to Ms. Cleary's question. I believe that would be about $400,000 or so that is in Title I through IV. And generally Title are specific requirements. And usually when we got the title money, we use the money for a particular school for a particular purpose. If we didn't get the title money, we didn't use it necessarily. We didn't supplement it with local money. But the IDI, disabled funding of $800,000 or $900,000 certainly would be in question. So I, I would say at least two-thirds of it would probably be at risk and it's a good consideration in the five-year plan.
So I should just focus, I should be focusing my thoughts on that 800K?
I, I don't, yeah.
What we're hearing right now, and, and I hate to repeat stuff that is likely to change tomorrow. And, and, and so I just want to caution everybody with my statement, first of all, we're hearing that Title I is likely to, in order to be funded fully, there will be a subject cuts in two and three. But there hasn't been anything, at least from the, from the federal level that we're aware of, as a communication through the IUs, that there will be cuts to IDA.
Thank you to you both for trying to explain that to me.
And I just will caution everyone that that's, that's what we recently heard.
Yeah. And I appreciate all of that. It's more, I just want to make sure that we're actually thinking about it when we're, when we're thinking about the numbers.
We are.
So when we see the numbers.
Yeah. And it's, it's, it's difficult, but no, I, I appreciate your, your, your comments and your questions. It, as you, as you, as you probably realize, it's rather difficult to, you know, make that, make that assumption, either way, at this point.
And I just remembered my question, if, if it's okay, if I ask the last one. Okay. The, the costs that we're going to get from Josh and Devin relative to the sewer, the overall sewer connection process, is that money that we're considering part of the overall, I'm going to call it renovation, for lack of a better word, whatever project we take on, is it going to be part of that overall budget that we're going to be trying to get from PFM? Or is it separate?
It's likely going to require borrowing for it to, to be completed. And therefore, it will be as part of the PFM process.
Thank you.
And I, I think, and Josh, just correct me if, if I'm wrong, I think there were two pieces of information that we will come back next week with, information associated with the sewer plant and all the, all the information that you guys were talking about. But in addition to that, a, a, I'll, I'll call it a not-to-exceed fee for making sure that we could proceed forward with some of this, the information that's up here. Any other, any other questions, members to my right, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I just, I understand the principle and everybody asking for a budget and certainly we're going to do that. But I also, no offense, guys, I don't necessarily want to just give a number without an, an understanding of what we're asking for. We need to determine of those educational requirements, those physical items, that we identify what we determine as priorities and what we can't, we know we can't go with all, right? So I, I see that as going on as an exercise as well as providing a budget. Because if we come up with a number, and I'm going to guess a number here, but 140 million or something like that, something between 100 and 213, we give you 140, but we haven't even determined exactly what we want in that building. So I think it, it takes a balancing with a directional and also want to sort of highlight that, as you know, these are based on assumptions, based on some even more recent, not the major consideration of why it's becoming less affordable. But there's more recent information, the last few months, we're talking about tariffs as in, as if. So there's lots of moving parts. So even when you get this five-year projection, there is an element of risk associated with it one way or another. So we have to be conscious that this five-year number is not something that locks in the district exactly into those because, as you know, things are changing all the time. We will be going through a contract a year from now. So there's all types of other variables that go into the equation that interest rates change the equation, right? If we're in an inflationary rate, and we're in inflationary rate, these Act One indexes might be higher. Not great, but that's, there's other elements around these. These are projections and lots of ifs. And we're making decisions off of those ifs. We're going to just try to do the best we can with those assumptions for this five-year plan that you'll see in April.
Any other question, Ms. Cancro?
If you can, Devin, if you could just tell us, like, I know if we're looking to add this on for a vote for next week to move forward, the next phase is kind of my understanding is that you're going to, you're not going to redo facilities assessment, you're going to utilize the information. And then kind of talk about maybe like what you need to do as far as software, you're prepping, what are you doing in the next?
Yeah, that's a good question. Thank you. So we're going to rely on all the work that you've already done as far as assessing the building because you've done already a lot of really good work. So we have something to work off of. The next phase is the building survey and building the model into our programming so that we can then be ready to do the concepts and keep rolling. So the next month would be, if you approve it in March, we would be able to build the model, prep with the team, do the programming that Mr. Winters was just talking about, and then get ready for concepts probably sometime in April.
All right. Thank you. Good.
Ms. Craft?
Yeah. So thank you for the presentation. I just want to, I just want to clarify that, well, a couple of things. I really think Mr. Winters had a great point with the five-year projection, that I think the board needs to go into this, you know, with Ms. Cleary's comments, that, you know, whatever number we come up with, there could be adjustments that we need to make later. That number cannot be set in stone. This is kind of how we got here, right? We had a number and we moved forward and the situation has changed. And I think we all need to recognize that could happen six months from now. And we need to be prepared to make adjustments. Luckily, we have a really good design team who's willing to make adjustments on the fly, like they're doing right now, and continue to work with us. I just, maybe Josh, you know, I think it's really important that people understand that the next step, like the scope of work, you're going to bring that to us next week. So you're going to have a defined scope, which is basically the kind of things you've, you've put up here in, at the bottom of the screen, to really look at what are the options around the building, what kind of renovations could be done, what kind of adjustments could be made to get to some of the things that we think are really important, right? I also think with that is going to come an estimate of the budget for us to do that work, for you to do that work, and for Schrader to do that work. And I think it would be helpful maybe for the board to understand, you know, a sort of a ballpark estimate of what that will take. You know, is it a $5 million spend between now and July? Is it a $100,000 spend between now and July? So between the two teams, you know, one team, how much do you think the district is going to need to estimate? I'm not going to hold you to the number, but I think we just need to prepare the board to be able to make a decision next week.
Next week, you'll see proposals in total for about $150,000 to take us through the process. And again, that, you know, would be fee that could be essentially applied to if the project does come to fruition, just included as part of what's already under agreement in terms of a, a fee schedule.
So it's, it's essentially the concepts, it would get us to a place where we'd have conceptual designs of a renovation project
That's right.
for this existing building. So Devin, one question I have for you is, does this also include the Lego structure for me? Well, and to Mr. Winter's other point, which I think is really valuable about prioritization, I think there's going to need to be a lot of discussions around the board about, do we, you know, want to spend the money on a new auditorium? Or do we keep the existing auditorium and spend the money on a new art center? Do we, you know, there's basically going to be horse trading that has to happen. One of the things that Schrader has done in the past with other projects is basically make a mock-up of the building and create these little Lego blocks that you can take this out and put this in and, and trade in and out what you want to do and how you want it to look and what you want it, what you want to spend. This is a $1 million block? This is a $2 million block, you know? And you sort of can make those adjustments. And I, I sort of see that at some point, we're going to need to get to a place where the board is confident that we've, we've reached the top five things that we definitely want to do. And then we leave it to our engineering team to say, what else can we get it for the money we have to spend, right? And so I just want to encourage the board to really go away from this meeting with, if everybody starts thinking about what those top five things are for you, we can have some really fruitful discussions in the meetings coming up. I think before you guys come back with some concepts, you're going to be asking those questions to say, where do we spend our time on the design side? And do we want a, a building that's smaller in space so that we can have better parking and circulation on the, on the property? Or do we want to keep the sprawling building we have and, you know, do some other things? So I just, you know, you probably have some comments, Devin?
I, I just want to make one comment. Those are all great discussion points and I do encourage all of you to think about those things. That, those decisions need to happen kind of early in the process so that we can have a direction for our concepts moving forward if we want to stick to this July timeframe. So think about that. That would happen in April. So that's another reason to approve whatever decision we're making in March so we can get the model built so that we can then do some sort of workshop with everybody and, and keep the process moving. So thank you for those comments. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. So I guess just to recap, what I heard you say is, one, it's about 150 or so thousand dollars to do this next step in the process to get some concepts around renovation around the high school. Two, we would need to workshop and prioritize our items to be able to give you that information in April. So it's 30 days. We have 30 days to do that. I understand we have the high school campus planning committee and I know there were some things that were identified. But at the end of the day, I think it's really important for the board to have continuity there with what we really believe is the most important items for us and, and bring those to the table, which may or may not have been things that the campus planning committee had discussed, right? Some of them came to us through the design process. And so with that, I just want to thank you both for coming and sticking it out for tonight. It was a long meeting and I appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Cancro?
No, I just want to thank you all for all your comments tonight. I appreciate all the words that you've all said. I know we're pivoting and I know, I appreciate all the work that we're going to have to put in towards this. So thank you for that. And thank you for everyone that's going to be working with us and the community, as you will also, will pull you in as well to, to, when we go into the next phase. So thank you.
Thank you. So with, with that, we, for, for next week, we have a number of presentations, the Spirit of Methacton Award, the 2526 Budget Update, and Special Education Update with Dr. Gravenese. We'll certainly have the reports and we have the fiscal items. Ms. Steffi?
Thank you. There are three fiscal items on the agenda for the board's consideration tonight. Item 9A, list of bills. I've received three questions in advance of the meeting tonight regarding the bill's paid report. The $10,000 payment to Lower Providence Township Sewer Authority was for the high school project escrow account and is for professional service fees associated with the project. An escrow deposit must be made before engaging with the township and any funds not used will be returned to Methacton. Check number 209004 to Glen Shob Roofing in the amount of $1,755 was for repairs to the Worcester roof. There was a leak that needed to be repaired. Glen Shob is our general roof maintenance contractor. The repair is unrelated to the capital plan roof replacement. Check number 209095 to Dishell, Bartley, and Dooley in the amount of $28,861 was applied as follows. $28,025 for January legal costs related to right-to-no requests. $836 for November to January legal costs related to Audubon Water company rate challenge. Item 9B, treasurer's report. Item 9C, budgetary transfers. There is one budgetary transfer on the agenda for approval, a $250 transfer for the Best Buddies organization.
Thank you, Ms. Steffi. Any questions from members to my right? Any on the budget items? Seeing none to my left. Any questions? Seeing none to my left, any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Steffi. Next on the agenda, we have personnel items, Dr. Sorgini.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, for the consideration of the board this month of the following personnel items. One resignation professional Dana Hyman, fourth grade instructor at Worcester, resignation for retirement at the end of the school year after 24 years of dedicated service to the students of Methacton. The Methacton family is grateful to Dana for, for her superior instruction at Worcester and we wish her the best in retirement. There are two resignations classified, both paraprofessionals at Arcola and both are resignations for retirement at the end of the school year. Janine McFate, 23 plus years of dedicated service to Methacton and Colleen Heidelbutler, nine years of dedicated service to Methacton. Once again, the Methacton family thanks them for their support of our students and we wish them well in retirement. There's one change of status classified for Erin Pratt from part-time office assistant at Eagleville to paraprofessional at Woodland. We thank her for taking on this new role. One uncompensated leave professional Rivka Milrod, third grade instructor at Eagleville for the dates listed. One uncompensated leave classified Gloria Rosado, personal care assistant at Arrowhead for the dates listed. Supplemental contracts for a spring coach, activity night chaperones at Arcola, homebound instruction, a mentor and semi-formal chaperones at the high school. One employment custodial casual on-call classified for Jennifer Kronk. We welcome Jennifer to Methacton. And the addition of a community education swim instructor, Emma Sutera. We thank Emma for taking on this role. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. Any questions from members to my left on any matters of personnel? Seeing none to my right, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Sorgini. Next on the agenda, we're going to ask Dr. Walsh to come forward about the curriculum program items. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening, everyone. For review and consideration, we'll be putting all these items on for review for public 28 days, so it'll run from March 19th through April 15th. We'll be coming back at the April action meeting for voting and approval. Our new curriculums for data science and security. We have revised curriculum for science, which is aligned to the new STEEL standards, which go into effect July 1st. You'll see those items listed there. Under world language, we have new, we have revised curriculum as well and tech ed. And you'll see all those listed and those documents were shared. And again, they'll be made for public review starting tomorrow at the Farina Center and from nine to three o'clock. Also for under 11C, you'll see resource adoption. We have a new human geography AP course. That's for social science, that's the AP is actually requiring a new text, so we're including that. We have a new ELA resource, my perspectives. We have our new guidance SCL program, Character Strong for K to 12, which will be incorporated into the Chapter 339 Plan. World languages for seven to 12. We have Amplify Science Kits K through six, lab aids through grades seven and eight, and additional science resources that are also aligned to the STEEL standards as well as AP courses for grades nine through 12, all listed under 11C. Again, they'll be sitting for 28 days for public review. We'll be coming back at the April action meeting seeking your approval. Thank you. Oh, and also just quickly for 11D, next week we'll be seeking approval after it sat for 28 days from the end of February up until now, the 2025 to 28 comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Other questions from members of the board to my left, Ms. Steele?
Thank you for this. I just have a question. If you, then I don't necessarily expect you to have the answer because I actually became aware of some information, not regarding any of the materials, but I was just wondering if maybe before the next, when we vote to approve, and I'm thinking just specifically about the English Language Arts, which I know is, I'm sure, greenlit on Ed Reports and everything. I did become aware that Ed Reports, the green lights do not necessarily align with the science of reading and that science of learning, those details, they are now putting newer stickers. So I'm just, what I'm asking, not in a very eloquent way, is that if there's any data from other school districts that have used my perspectives, if you could share it from other school districts where their data has, where they've seen improvements and increases, it may or may not be available. So I'm just requesting maybe before the April, if you can make that available in some way or another.
I can just add, it is a newer copyright. So this is a 2025 copyright, so it's a newer series. So I can certainly seek out some districts that are using it, but I know because it's new.
I totally, I completely understand. I just didn't, I was just wondering if that data is available somewhere. So I just figured it out. Thank you.
Ms. Chonda?
Thank you. I am super excited for cybersecurity.
Thought you would be.
And I would love to see a review or something on what the education will look like around that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other question, the comments to my left, seeing none to my right, Ms. Cleary?
I just want to follow up on that question because that was mine. The data sciences and the cybersecurity, so they're two new classes?
Correct.
Completely new?
They are electives for next year, correct?
That's awesome. So I, I agree with, I agree with my colleague. That's fantastic. I mean, to use Josh's word, cybersecurity is very hot right now, so.
It puts us on the cutting edge.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I apologize from a memory perspective, but the schools queued in the keys for literacy. Have we already approved moving forward? I know there's not a financial impact, but there is potential to put it in the budget. So I'm wondering, did we already move forward with something where like, from a contractual perspective with these guys?
We, we have not moved forward, with what you've seen this evening, we've not moved forward with any contractual matter associated with that. We've had in the past year and a half through the Senator Muth Grant and through maybe some other local dollars to get some professional development done for the administrators. But, but the, the stuff that we would like to bring before you for approval next week is listed in the presentation and it will be a contract that is still sitting with the solicitor for review. But it, it was one of those where it'll be three one-year contracts locking in the pricing as you see it here and the current budget as it exists at the finance committee meeting this past week, as well as what we'll present next week, includes the $142,000 in to the budget.
So there will be a voting item in, related to that, and also there'll be a voting item. I guess you talked to Ms. Cancro and Ms. Perdue about putting a voting item on related to moving forward on the, on the high school as well.
With the high school part, yeah. So there'll be, there'll be really possibly three new items. The one for the sewer plant, the one for continuing forward with the professional services related to the high school, and the, and the third one is the literacy program.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Merzke?
So you brought up the sewer plant as a potential vote item. I personally think we need to prioritize the objectives for the, for the potential remodeling of the school and that needs to be included in that before we vote on moving forward, unless what we're talking about is just moving forward with like permit process so we don't lose the time. But, but in my view, that has to be considered as part of the budget for the renovation. And until we, when we first have to prioritize from the list that we came up with, what we want to include, and then we need to determine what the budget is going to be.
Yeah, I, I, I think I understand what you're saying now. And, and this goes back to, bless you, goes back to, I think, what Ms. Cleary was getting at. She was wanting, she wanted a, not only what the cost is to, to continue planning and, and working with the township to, and the two townships to plan forward, but in doing that, what is the potential larger outlay at the end in terms of tearing the building down, you know, digging the trenches, all, all that kind of stuff? Yeah.
So it depends on what you're asking for.
Yeah, yeah.
Like if, if, if what we're approving is.
But I think they're both, but I think they're both challenging to even say that we're going to do it without knowing what the, the full.
I would agree.
I mean, yeah. Well, the, you're right, Ms. Graff. I think, I think that the challenge is that we, you know, moving forward with the permitting process, because it takes so long, by stopping it at this point creates, it creates a potential where we wouldn't ever be able to include.
So that's my point, is that what are we voting on? Is it just to move forward with permitting?
Correct.
Which is.
I would be asking for.
We've already coughed up $10,000 to start the process.
Correct.
So I mean, I would assume that the incremental cost is minimal to continue that process, but we need to make a decision about prioritizing this among the other things we want to do, in my opinion.
I agree with what you're saying. That, that makes sense.
I mean, the other part I'd like to hear about the sewer plant is I thought originally there was some potential cost savings on operational budget standpoint, and that needs to be factored in. Sure. I just.
Well, and, you know, to that point, I think that the administration can come to us next week with an estimate of what the impacts are to move it offsite versus keep it onsite, what the cost is to the district.
I think Josh even said he could probably get a full comprehensive.
No, I, I mean, I think in the past, Dr. Sorgini has presented to us what the impact is of that onsite. We have to, we have insurance we have to pay for, there's maintenance costs, there's other things that are considered, but to the point that I think we need to get a picture of like day-to-day costs, operating costs versus if we moved it offsite, there's a big cost, but over time, what's the payoff for that? And I also think that the approval for next week should be strictly around continuing the permitting because we've already spent money to start the permitting process and we would just lose that money. I mean, we want to move forward, that's going to take a long time to get through the permitting process.
I'll confirm, but I, I think you're right, the escrow that we, we laid out is probably the.
I don't mean the escrow. I mean that we've, we've submitted permit applications that we would then have to revoke and then we would have to start the permitting process all over again. So we would lose that time, that time is money. Yeah.
Okay. That's right. Thank you for that input. If, if anything changes after speaking with Josh and the, and the team, you know, we'll certainly inform the board through our memo process. Ms. Cleary?
Oh, yes, switching gears for a moment, back to the literacy plan. So we haven't seen that contract. Next week, we're going to be asked to vote on the costs for just 25, 26 or all three years?
Just 25, 26.
Okay.
It'll be, it, it'll be worded so that the board has to vote on the following years in order to approve it.
Okay.
So that's why I was saying there, there, it's, it's three one-year contracts.
Okay. You said something about locking down.
Which includes locking down the pricing. So they're giving us the pricing by, by locking that down.
And if we want to move forward, year two will cost. I just want to make sure that if the administration, the Ed Committee, when you, when we do see the results, if you're not happy with the results, that we have a way to get out. And I, I can't confirm that because I haven't seen the contract, but I, I'm sure our solicitors taking care of that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on, on those items? Thank you, Dr. Walsh.
Dr. Zerbi, I just want to thank the teachers and coordinators for helping to support the pilot process and writing the curriculum. So thank you.
Thank you. Next on the, the agenda, we have policy. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Pretty simple, this month, the policies are in the 700 series. Basically just edits some pronoun changes that exist with those policies. And the three that you'll be voting on next week will be 702, gifts, grants and donations, 704, maintenance, and 705, facilities and workplace safety. Thank you.
Any questions to my right on matters of policy? To my left, seeing none. I will move on to other. We have gifts and donations. We approve a generous donation from Kelly Moza for the backpack program of $52.18 to approve a generous donation from Worth and Company from Methacton High School Marching Band for Student Activity Fund in an amount of $1,000. And they approve a generous gift from Worcester Home and School to the Worcester Elementary for two purchase of basketball backboards with pole, rim and net in the amount of $7,100. There's a trip for Methacton High School Future Business Leaders Club to attend state competition on April 7th through the 9th, Hershey, PA. And then the transportation, there is an addition of one driver for your approval. And then we have under 13D, the athletic contract with Rothman Orthopedics. That has been updated recently to include some of the recommended changes received from members of the board, as well as on 13E, the CADDY Photography Services. That contract has been updated based on feedback from members of the board. The, the transportation agreement, so at the, Ms. Steffi, do you want to talk a little bit about the, what the transportation agreement is and what the, the important part of that?
Sure. So we used to contract with a company called Baogo and they would transport our out-of-district placements. They are no longer going to work with Methacton, so we needed to find an alternative. The alternative that we found that we think is acceptable is hop, skip and drive. So we were asking for approval of that contract. In addition to out-of-district placements, they will be transporting our homeless students.
This contract also is not listed on the agenda, still in the hands of the solicitor. And then under 13G, the Pennsylvania Music Indicators Association. Methacton is looking to host the festival, January 22nd through the 24th at the Arcola Skyview Campus. All the costs are paid through participation fees to the PMEA. Are there any questions on any of the items listed under other? To my right, Ms. Cleary?
Yeah, 13D, the athletic training contract. So I would, wanted to offer just a, a tad more feedback on this contract before we consider entering into a three-year deal. So on Exhibit A, wait, is that the wrong contract? Under the school support of the contractor with the advertising and the banners, okay. Bullet two is, is around the two banners that we're going to hang, and it's my understanding that we purchased those last year. The very last paragraph says that the contractor, meaning Rothman, has the right to require us to redo those if they change their branding. And their limit of liability would be capped at $2 million and we'd have to cover the rest. $2,000, what did I say? $2 million? Can you imagine a sign that costs $2 million?
But we would, I think it says that we would split the cost like we did in the original purchase.
They, they would be. I think my point is, yes, Mr. Merzke's correct, but my point is if.
And so is the split, I believe, is that so?
So if it's $5,000, we pay $3,000, they pay $2,000.
Correct. They're only responsible for $2,000. But my point is before that, if a company wants to change their branding, that's on them. And I didn't catch that the fir, I didn't catch it last year, or maybe I did and we couldn't change it. But catching it now and before we do a three-year deal, companies change their branding all the time. I don't want to pay for that and we shouldn't have to.
Yeah, I, I think, I understand what you're saying and, and I don't think it was in last year's agreement because we, we would never have purchased, we didn't purchase anything at that, by that time, if that, if that makes sense. Meaning that I don't think they would have put that.
I think it was in there.
Was it?
Yeah, and so I had a lot of feedback last year, maybe it was something we couldn't negotiate, but I think we need to have our solicitor put our foot down. You want to change your branding, you need to pay for that.
Okay.
Nothing but this $2,000 on them and the rest on us.
And then actually, you know, limit our exposure as well on, on the cost, if we're splitting the cost.
I don't think we should split the cost on branding. If we want to split the cost on when the banners become worn out, splitting the cost makes sense to me, right? But we should split the cost evenly, which is, I think, to their points. So that was my last bit of feedback.
Thank you for that feedback. Any other questions on matters of other? I'm sorry. Ms. Austin?
Yeah, also on that one, we had talked about, are we making sure the arrival times for the athletic trainers? We were, we were checking on that to make sure that they were as per the contract.
Yeah, that, that came up in finance committee and we, I had, I had asked the athletic director to comment on that and I provided that, the response in the, in the last week's memo.
Okay.
But the, the answer is that during the week, they generally are complying with that during the weekend, not as much. So I instructed the athletic director to tell Rothman that this moment forward, they will comply with that process.
Okay. And are we still on, okay, are you on the, Kate, are you? You're good, okay. Because I just had another question about the hop, skip, drive.
You're good. Okay. Because I just had another question about the hop, skip, drive transportation agreement, and that was wondering if the cost of this contract is similar to what we were paying the previous contractor.
Ms. Steffi, do you know?
It is. Okay. Thank you.
The, the, the challenge with the transportation agreement, if we don't get that back in a reasonable period of time, we're going to have to punt that to another month because it's actually rather lengthy and it's, it, that's why it's sitting with the, the solicitor right now. So I, I'm just kind of giving you that heads up.
I just want to say that I'm glad to see that Methacton is hosting the PMEA District Orchestra Festival here.
Any other questions on other? Ms. Purdue?
I'm sorry. I wanted to step back just because I missed this for curriculum. I just want to confirm. So we have the comprehensive plan under review still, and we'll be voting on that next week, right? Have we received any comments?
I'll just say it real quick. We haven't had anybody come in to review it. We don't know that anybody didn't review it online, but no, no comments were submitted, and that window closes tomorrow for 28 days.
Okay. Just wanted to check in. Thank you.
Any other questions on other or any other? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I am. And now that we've sort of, I think we've nailed down the athletic contract, I have comments on the photography with Katie. Our con-, this document still says that, well, it says two things that I'm concerned about. It says, road shows require a minimum of 30 senior sessions to be scheduled within 48 hours of the road show. So I just want to clarify if that is within 48 hours of the road show being posted or 48 hours prior to the road show occurring. Either way, the language should be clarified because this language is ambiguous. But the second thing that's very concerning is that even though we had previously commented on this, the number of road shows in this agreement is still only two. So if we have 30 seniors who sign up and there's only two road shows, that means we only have spots for 60 kids. Here. Everyone else then has to drive to Horsham, which I think is part of the problem and one of the things we were trying to alleviate. So I'd like to see them do at least four road shows. And the other comment is there's the timing of when they're going to identify these road shows. Like, I just think there's, again, it's, the issue last year was they were announced and they were in the summer months. Two in the summer is fine. I think there needs to be two more in the fall so that people who are on vacation, kids who have sports, kids who are away at sport camps, other things, activities, band, there's a whole lot of stuff going on in the summer that kids may or may not be available to take photos. So we need to also offer opportunities in the fall. And I think it's pretty easy for them to move that up to four. Did we not talk to them about this?
I could comment on that if, if it's helpful. Dr. Yucar shared with us that we had two in the contract last year, but they did agree to do two others. And so I think it makes, I do think it makes sense to see if we could get that changed to four since they were willing to do four for us last year.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Like interpretation question. Does the language say a cap of 30 or a minimum of 30? Yeah. So that doesn't mean there's only 30 spots. It means that they won't have it unless 30 people sign up. But there could be 90, right? Could be more than 30. So what they can fit in, in a day. Okay.
I think it's worth, it's worth getting the clarification. So appreciate that. Yep. Any other comments on matters of other?
Can I just confirm? Will you have these contracts then updated before the next meeting? Because I think one of these, it was indicated that the plan is to have it finalized this month? Or is there, if we don't have the recommendations on agreement, will these be removed from the, for next week?
We will have the modifications made.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Turn it over to Madam President.
We'll move to old or new businesses. Anyone on the board have old or new business at this time? Yes, Ms. Clary?
I feel like I'm monopolizing the meeting. It's probably all the chai tea latte I had before I came. Seriously, though, I just wanted to spend a minute to thank them, Methacton Education Foundation, for a really fantastic dodgeball tournament this weekend. We had over, we, they had over 1,000 people participate between volunteers, participants and spectators. It's really well done. They apparently did pretty well as a result of the event, and I know, I'm sure that they will be here, I would think, next, next week to, to talk about it. But I just wanted to say thank you to them. And then finally, I wanted to congratulate the Farina Fireballs, the adult district administration team for winning once again this year. I figure I was surprised you were able to wait this long before bragging, so I just thought I would say, you know.
We're wearing your shirts and our medals next week.
Awesome. Oh, and so, but for the community in all seriousness, if you go on to the Methacton Education Foundation website, there are already photos of the winners of each division. The kids' costumes are amazing. Even the Farina Fireballs are up there with their medals. So it's worth looking at. Thank you.
If I could just mention that, that, that whole event is a great example of community engagement. And, and I think as, as a, I guess, an ex-official member of the, of the foundation, I want to thank you for, for being a part of that and helping get that organized. And that's, it's just a great opportunity for us bringing hundreds of children and adults in, into our district.
It's such an awesome community event and just loved it. Anyway, yes.
Great. Any other things for old or new business? All right. Seeing none, we will move to courtesy of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments, and you could please submit questions via email to information@methacton.org.
Jim Malik, Worcester. These comments go to the high school project. This is why you work up all the options and don't rely on a big idea wish list to create a budget. When you tell people, hey, what do you want? Whatever we can get. And now I hear some of you guys are surprised? We couldn't afford it? 440 million bucks? We've been telling you that for two years. Somehow it all of a sudden sinks in? I, I don't get it. You need to take a vote at the next meeting not to proceed with the project, then to approve the superintendent's recommendation. I, I didn't hear that being put on the agenda. That needs to be put on the agenda to put that thing to bed once and for all. You stated in your recommendation that we're not moving forward at this time. What does that mean? You put it on hold? You're going to come back to it? Make some finality to your decision and don't leave room to come back to it at some other time. Mr. Bryce wants a budget, and he wants a budget number so he can find ways to spend it all. Okay? You know, we, what you should do is perform a study of all the options, especially renovation, right? HVAC, HVAC and bare essentials, HVAC, bare essentials and something else. But don't just give them a budget and say, oh, you know what? Spend up to the limit. You know where that's going to go. It's not going to go to a good place. I heard that you guys are concerned about educational programming with this high school project. What are you guys talking about? I went to Mr. Regina's presentation on your educational programming, you know, what you wanted for the new school. Here's a couple of the highlights. Sensory room, bookstore, lunch and learn, Fab Lab, apartment program. Those are the educational objectives for a school that's the best ranked in the entire district by Niche and U.S. World Reports as it sits right now. And you guys want to put that in there? Let me design it. I can put that in there easy. Couple modulars. You got 25 extra classrooms. Use a couple of the extra classrooms for it. Makes, makes no sense. And I heard building a 400 some odd million dollar high school is going to somehow be good for property values? When you get the tax increases associated with that, the property values are going to plummet.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Ed Theo, Lower Providence. I'd like to say first, I, I saw the presentation earlier on Schools Cube, and I was really looking forward to some of the programs that they offered. I'm really glad they're moving towards more common assessments across the district because I've seen that's been an issue in the past. So I'm really looking forward to, as we adopt some of those things in the school, that we really see a lot of the improvement that we're looking for. It, it looks like a really good program based on a couple of the presentations that I've seen so far. So I appreciate that. Thank you. On, on the high school, I'm definitely disheartened as everyone else is with what's been, what's, what's transpired and where we're at. I know we originally, based on the, the communications we had, the original design cost was in the $170 million range, and it grew to 213. And I was really wondering why it up, it took us to this point to, we didn't look at some of those trades. There was a lot of communication back and forth tonight on different trading options and how to make that cost a lot lower. I really would have liked to have seen those before this, this point. Because it really, when you have that kind of budget, like typically in my business, we do a lot of design to costs. So we look at all the requirements we have. We say, okay, what can we afford? What can't we afford? What can we trade out? And I really would have liked to see that up to this point. So, because I really think a new construction is really in the best interest for the district, for the taxpayer, for property value, and all the things that we're doing. And like some of my initial issues with the renovation, you know, a lot of the things that I saw in the school when I was touring as part of the High School Command Committee, I didn't really see addressed in any renovation plans. Particularly, I saw lots of mold, leaking natural gas lines in some of the science labs, lack of ventilation in the science classes, and also the art classrooms. Like, none of that's there. I don't think any of the renovation plans would actually address those issues. They're still going to exist within the, the system you have. And, and even flooding in parts of the schools. Like, in some of the life sciences areas, there was just flooding every year. It just happened. And part of the renovation didn't include any of that. So I'd be really disappointed to see if we go down a renovation path that, like, none of this stuff will really get addressed. And we really end up with a school, we have a ton of issues today, and we're going to spend a lot of money and not really seeing the gains out of it that I think the new construction would. And I'd really like to see options where maybe there is a new construction where potentially you can add on later. So as money comes available in the future, you can add things to the, the building as part of that, where you have like places where it says, okay, we want to add this programming to really add this educational value. And I really think if we go down a renovation path, we're really not going to see the value, and we're not going to get the educational outcomes that we're really looking for with a lot of the comprehensive plan that, that's in the, in the budget right now. So I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. Good evening. In the short discussion around the, the next three months for renovation, we, we had Josh with CHA leading that. I don't know to what extent he's an architect, but I think that if we're talking $100 million for renovation, we need an architect in charge. And I think at this point, Schrader Group is an outstanding architect for new construction. But I think that architects who thrive and excel at renovation should be considered for this project. And I think that in the early days of this project, when Dr. Schr-, Dr. Zerby was asking for big ideas, he got big ideas from some of the students that didn't go anywhere. He, he ended up making a recommendation for a new school without any comment as to why is, why was renovation put on, put on a, a back burner somewhere. So I, I think that it's, the board at this point ought to consider an architect search, and that architects who have been involved in renovation would be better, would, 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 would have learned a lot that could be helpful to, to this new renovation project. And, and there are, there are a lot of ideas. One idea is for a new auditorium. There are ideas for moving Farina around and, and moving Sewerage around. I think those are all secondary to improving the edginal, educational capability of the existing building. And part of improving the educational capability, of course, is the HVAC project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for?
Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. It's amazing how quickly the plans for new high school have come to a halt. Equally amazing is why. Finally realizing that the projections presented back in October were wrong, were faulty, as I and others communicated to you many times. The only good news here is this project was halted before mortgaging the district's future and saddling the taxpayers with 420 million in debt service requirements, or $10 million in annual deficits, or facing severe programming cuts. I think it's important to realize that the additional cost of the high school did not sink this project. The projections presented back in October were based on $200 million in borrowing. An additional $13 million spread out over 30 to 40 years did not lead to $10 million deficits starting in year five. The projections were wrong, and I hope you all now realize the importance of getting details on assumptions, getting more than one page of a forecast, asking questions, challenging assumptions, and spending more than a month on projections to review and evaluate the accuracy. This is a, really a failure of the board's fiduciary duty to us as taxpayers. You almost had us going down the road of buying, of building this new high school that we could nowhere, come nowhere close to affording. And there needs to be some accountability. How much time was spent by the Methacton staff, the administration, teachers, the public, students on this project, when you could have been focusing, focused on improving education? How much money has been spent that's now going to be going down the drain? I hope Ms. Steffi or somebody's going to quantify that and report that to the public. That'd be a great statistic to know and help sink in why it's important that you look at financial projections. We need accountability here. For your next step, you cannot do these projections in a month. You need to take more time. You'll never get it done by April if you're going to do a renovation project. You need to understand what we can afford. I already know that the projections presented tonight and at last week's finance committee are wrong. You're starting with the budget. We all know the budget process is flawed. Look at the budget variances Ms. Steffi presented back in January. You'll see significant hundreds of thousand dollars in variances going up, going down, all directions, huge amounts. The, the, the projections do not reflect any growth in property assessment values. That's not reality. Dr. Zerby admitted last week that the projections do not reflect retirements and their impact. It's easy to forecast. Why haven't you? The projections, again, lack details. One page, three lines of revenues, three lines of expenses, limited informational assumptions, no details whatsoever. informational assumptions, no details whatsoever. You needed to take at least six months to really do these projections. And you talk about unknown factors?
Thank you.
You need to do sensitivity analyses. This is important.
Thank you very much.
You can't leverage the district's future on BS projections, as we've seen in the past.
Thank you.
Hi, Amy Smith, Worcester. I just wanted to comment on the literacy plan, and just say thank you to everyone for that engaging discussion this evening and all of your questions. It helped me to understand where, what we're looking at, what we're doing, and why. I especially want to thank Ms. Perdue for her questions around special education, and Ms. Austin as well, to talk about the high school. I know as a member of the SCA that that's something that we've talked about as a parent group. So, I appreciate you bringing up those concerns specifically in your discussion this evening. And I just, I just want to take a second to acknowledge Dana Hyman from Worcester Elementary School. I was fortunate enough to have two children who were in her fourth grade classroom at different times. But she was just a stellar example of what you hope for in an elementary school teacher. Compassionate, kind, thoughtful, creative, reaching at least my children, and I'm sure others, at times when I was, I had no idea what they were going through, or what they were going on as a, you know, as a nine-year-old. But she had just such a keen insight and a way of connecting with each of the students. So, I just wanted to, to take a minute to publicly thank her for that. When I saw on the agenda that she was going to be retiring, and I mentioned it to my kids, they kind of paused, and were like, wait, where's she going? Like, what's she doing? And I said, well, you know, it's, it must just be time. So, we wish her all the best, and, and, you know, all of our teachers who have, have put in all this work at the elementary, and I hope they know how much the, the students, who are now no longer in those elementary buildings, appreciate them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Seeing none, is there any comments or from the Board at this time? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?